The Trinity County Board of Supervisors to order Supervisor Brown, would you care to lead us in the course of allegiance?
Thank you. If you'd join me, I put the leadings to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recording in progress.
Okay, county matters, item 1.1, clerk of the board. Pursuant to the Trinity County government governance manual, confirm the seating of District 5 Supervisor Dan Frazier as chairman and District 1 Supervisor Keith Groves as chair pro temp, vice chair.
We're supposed to do a little ceremony where we give, we have the...
That's the next one. That's the next item.
Oh, well then we just look at each other as opposed to... Because you've already moved.
Well, can I do the customer dance?
Usually the customer is changing his seat, but we did that.
And we'll open this to public comment, and do we also need to vote on this, or...
Yes.
Okay, so is there any public comment on item 1.1?
I see none in the room, I have no raised hands, and no new chats.
Okay. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll move to accept 1.1 as presented.
One second.
Motion by Supervisor Groves, second by Supervisor Gogan, Supervisor Gogan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Frazier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 1.2, and I will present an engraved gavel to the outgoing Chairman Jeremy Brown from District 4. And then you have to make a statement.
Well, thank you very much, I had a great time last year being chairman, and hopefully as I continue along with this position, I'll get the chance yet again to have this gavel, and I'll just keep this one, I won't request a new one. Thank you.
Well, that was an announcement.
All right, with that, we will open up the general public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer to the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. Do we have any public comment?
Tarry Mines Junction City. Yeah, I think a lot of people like to comment, whether it's probably holding them back a little bit, but as we see Weaverville's demise happen in front of our eyes, we lost Main Street Cafe, we lost the Red Coffee House. It's not looking too good. I think you guys have got a serious problem on your hands. You guys really screwed up. It's time to own up for some of your actions and lack thereof of actions. I don't think you realize what's happening in front of your face. I brought this real estate guide. Prices are half of what they were six months ago, and they're going to go half of that also. It has to do with common sense and economics. You guys are not to blame for the cannabis industry's price, that's not, has nothing to do with you guys. That's overproduction and some other factors. But you needed to help and you left over $7 million on the table in equity grants for the largest portion of license holders in the county. That's a catastrophic failure. That's not small, that's catastrophic. I don't know why you guys aren't moving some emergency regulations through quickly to get the equity program up and running so we quit losing $3 million plus grants every year. I think we could use that here in Trinity County, I think the restaurants here could use the business. That money virgins down. I was in the cannabis office yesterday. You guys realize, all those numbers and things, people aren't going to sign up for licenses anymore, they can't do it, and you guys left their money that the state was giving away for free to give to them so they could pay for these licenses out there. I don't know why you guys haven't acted. You have a major responsibility here. You guys have screwed up monstrous, and I'm calling you out. You guys have blown this completely. You have not acted responsibly, you have not done what your responsibility is, that you took an oath for that seat for. You're supposed to help the community here, you're not supposed to sit back and commit failures and not do actions. Seriously, you guys blew this. I mean, I don't know what to say to you. You're probably going to have about five farmers left in this county after this next year. You'll have some people sign up again this year, won't be very many, and then next year it'll be over. It's on you guys, you guys blew it.
Any other comments from the room?
Hi, Veronica Kelly Albies, Douglas City, and Weaverville Douglas City Parks and Rec, kind of a two for today. I actually want to say welcome to the new year. New years always bring a lot of new things, exciting. We can leave some of the baggage in the past, hopefully, look forward to new things, exciting things. I disagree a bit with the former speaker in the sense that I feel like perhaps we focused a bit too much on one subject in the past, and a lot of the jobs, there are a lot of jobs available here in the county. A lot of qualified people for those jobs have left the area because of toxic atmosphere or finding jobs outside of one particular industry. And so we need those, we need more diverse opportunities within our community and workers within our community. And so I look here to say welcome to the new year, congratulations to make it into the new year. My hope is that we walk in with a lot of wisdom for great opportunities. I thank you all for taking on everything that comes, not only has come, but is coming your way. I look forward to the hope of getting back into the general plan. I look forward to the hope of connecting with the community as a whole to find solutions to the things that do plague our community and our county, because I do believe that we can do it all together if we open communication and we focus on the big picture, not one picture. I have hope that our recreational programs will continue to grow and bring economic success, which is a possibility in our county, we continue to see that grow. There has been a lot of growth, I have watched our Main Street grow with the vendors that are down there, up north, all the new businesses that we did have, and some expansions that will be coming, I think, throughout this year, and you'll be hearing about. There are some exciting things that are coming to the county, and I want you to remember those things as well when people want to stand up here and point a finger. We share in those successes and those failures, we do it as a community. We look to you to help us bolster all areas, cannabis, merchants, restaurants, recreation, everything. And my hope is that you are ready for that task, I think you are, you've been carrying it for a while. So I simply want to say thank you for taking it on, I look forward to doing it all together as a community, and I want to say, let's do it together. Thank you, happy new year.
Do we have anyone on Zoom? We have one more in the room, too.
Jack Norton Weaverville, hey, could you, I don't know if I'm asking at the right time, but if, from the consent calendar, the...
Unless this first off is not on the agenda, we'll bring up the consent calendar in a bit.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Adrian Keyes on Zoom.
Good morning, everybody, welcome to 2022, and congrats to Ian Frazier, you're our new chair, looking forward to this year, working with y'all again. It's been a long road, and one thing I'll agree with the last comment around for sure is I think we would do a lot better working together than, and losing a bunch of the baggage that we've been carrying over the last several years, because there's still a lot of stuff we got to get done. One thing that I would like to ask the county to do is to consider setting up a program to administer the Qualified Cultivator Grants, they're coming down from VCC. They come completely from cannabis funds, or fees and taxes, and it's money that is generated by the businesses in this county, and it would be fantastic to see some of that brought back to Trinity County. They are primarily intended to do the environmental compliance work that is required by CEQA, so I think we can all agree, you know, CEQA's been a pretty big thing, and people have a lot of concerns about the environmental impacts of cultivation, and these grants are specifically to address those issues and to get cultivators through the CEQA process and to a point of environmental compliance that is, you know, it's becoming more and more difficult as the industry compresses somewhat here. And yeah, we're going to have a real hard year ahead of us, and I would like to be able to spend a lot more of my time working on my farm and developing my business and building a brand than, than kind of like, you know, cage fighting for continued existence, this kind of feels like how it's been the last few years. So I would please request that the Board of Supervisors direct the staff in the grants department to set up a Qualified Cultivator Grant Program. What I've heard, and I believe this to be the case, that state law requires that any grants that come from the state be administered by either a public agency like the county, nonprofit like RCD or Watershed Center, and you know, Watershed Center is carrying the Watershed Enhancement Grants, or tribes, and we don't have any designated tribes in the county. This particular grant is rather broad-based and would be more efficiently handled by the county than by a single agency like Watershed or RCD, because their, well, their focus is just somewhat different. This is a very, this grant could be spread apart or spread around to many, many, many cultivators in many, many, many districts to improve roads, sediment deposit, culverts and the like, and I think one of the most important things is to increase water storage in significant ways, ways that an individual business, especially in the market right now, just simply can't afford. So please, I ask that you direct staff to set up this program for us and get it rolling, and we'll see what we can do this year, all right, thank you much.
Adrian, this is Keith, what's the name of the grant program?
The Qualified Cultivator.
Thank you.
What's the amount of the grant money? Do you know, Adrian?
I don't believe that's determined yet per jurisdiction in the same way it was with the local jurisdictional assistance grants. I think this will be, well, first, I just don't think that's decided yet, if it has, I don't know.
Thank you.
We have no more raised hands and no new chats, oh, Tom Blanco.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Tom Blanco, Douglas City. And congratulations, Mr. Chair, on taking the gavel. I'd like to encourage you in that position that I think many of us have been longing for you to have, to, despite all the things that need to be done in Trinity County, we know cannabis is important, we know fire response is important, but since your time on the planning commission, we've been working with the alternative building code that is known as Class K, it's really limited density, owner-built rural dwellings. As you know, there is, I can't think of an issue that's been more uniformly supported in Trinity County. Not a single voice in opposition in any of the planning commission meetings that considered the issue. We worked together, commissioner, board, put together a draft ordinance that I think is very well done. At the very least, as a jumping off point, I would encourage you to move forward swiftly, not to underestimate the bureaucratic friction that can happen on this issue, and agendize this as quick as we can, and let's get to the nuts and bolts of this, see what we can do. I think cannabis has taught us that carve-outs are something we can work with, so if there are communities that haven't otherwise made their voices known, that don't want this, we can create carve-outs for that, but let's start the process. I certainly make myself available to the boards, to any supervisors, to the ad hoc committee that's dealing with this, as an attorney, to any engineering contacts I have, anything I can do to help speed this along. But ultimately, the ball's in your court, and I don't think there's ever been a more clear mandate, and I think it's good for Trinity County. We spent so much time arguing about different things and coming down on the different sides of the fence, on cannabis, on COVID response, on everything else, so I really look forward to something that's unifying and something that the community really supports. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will have some update on that later in the report out section. Do we have any others?
I have no other raised hands, no new chats, seeing no movement from the boardroom, I agree with it.
Okay, with that, we will close public comment and move on to the consent calendar. These items include routine non-controversial matters that will be acted on by one board member. Roll call motion, if a member of the public has any question or comment on an item in the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Is there any public comment?
Jack Norton Weaverville, with respect to the emergency COVID in the consent...
It's actually not a consent, it's in county matters, this, on this agenda.
Okay, thank you.
So we will have an opportunity to discuss that. Any other public comment?
No more raised hands, no new chats, and I see no movement in the room.
Do we have any items that any supervisors or staff would like to see pulled? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to accept consent calendar as presented. One second.
Motion by Supervisor Groves, second by Supervisor Brown, Supervisor Brown, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Chairman Frazier?
Aye.
It's all right, it's the first day. All right, moving right along, item 3.1, reports and announcements, reports from department heads. Do you have any department heads who would like, wish to report out?
Good morning, Chair, Supervisors. David Holbuck, interim deputy director for the Department of Transportation. I just want to say congratulations, Chair Frazier, and thank you Supervisor Brown for your service over the last year, and happy new year to all of you. So for the Department of Transportation, I just wanted to speak to a couple things quickly and also make myself available for any questions that you may have. First, I wanted to highlight that the director position for the Department of Transportation is, that's moving along, and Dr. Coons has advanced that to the point where I believe our consultant is reviewing applications and looking forward to the next step in that process for hiring in that position. With respect to recent storm activity, and to back up a moment, I apologize, I have not been available for any report outs recently in other board meetings, so again, this is quite a bit to go through, and if you have concerns, I'm happy to address them. Our crews have been operating overtime quite a bit in order to deal with these recent storm events and rain events, and any trees, landslides, anything that has occurred. That specifically with Downriver has been impacted quite a bit, as you all are aware, as well as South County and previous burris cars. The Canyon Creek slide, of course, was a relatively large event that now is currently open and passable, but will have to be addressed in the future. I believe there's other items coming up here in terms of emergency declaration that I won't get into with respect to these recent storms. I would say that Coffee Creek, that is still being advanced in terms of cleaning up the debris flow at the 4.1 mile mark, so that we are advancing on, but is one that is currently in funding reimbursement discussions with NRCS specifically. I can get into that in more detail if you wish. I will say just to the general public that please continue to use our online system for submitting any requests for any road cleanup that needs to occur for specific reasons. Our crews are operating under the current policy of prioritizing specific roads for cleanup first, and they will work through those road determinations or road categories, I suppose, in terms of their priorities. But any complaints that come through to us, we are happy to address those and prioritize those as we're able. Also want to point out that the Department of Transportation has a Facebook page now that has been showing some of the work that we've been doing over those last several weeks with these recent storms, so that's just another place to look for information. Speaking to the recent event, just in terms of context, there's something like 1,000 trees that I've heard that have been down, specifically in the Downriver area. Denny Road, for example, that we are looking to address as we're able to. As far as I understand, all roads are open and passable, although some trees may still be in the roadway to some degree, encroaching along the roadway. We will continue to clean those up as we can, but it is an issue of making sure that roads are passable at the moment and to address any immediate concerns, so there'll be an ongoing process. And that's regardless of any snow removal efforts that were, that are ongoing, or any landslides, as I've mentioned earlier. Another comment I want to make for the general public is just to be aware that the DOT, our current policy, is to not address driveways. That is the responsibility of a private landowner to clear up their own driveway. When our plows go through, there oftentimes is a berm left, a snow berm, that may be difficult for individuals to get over, but we cannot spend road funds on cleaning up those type of situations that is on the landowner to be able to address any culverts that they are, that are on their property in their driveway, or any snow removal that could limit their ability to get through their residences. With that, we will do everything we can to clear the roads itself, we're not looking to create any problems, and I just want people to be aware of that, that is our current policy. That being said, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
So, the Coffee Creek 4.1 mile mark is, I understand you're still looking for monies, or you're in discussions, as you said, and previously you told me the middle of January was kind of the target date to get advancements on whatever that means. But we are reaching a critical period now that we have around 5 to 7 feet of snow in the Alps. We should get one good pineapple express and we won't have to worry about cleaning that out, because it will be gone down river, so. From our district, that's a, that's a critical issue.
And that point is well taken, yes, we are working with NRCS with a specific program they have, Emergency Watershed Program, that is intended to deal with these types of situations. They currently are going through their environmental review and approval through their state office. It's a federal agency, but through their state office. The target date that they did give me was the middle of January in terms of clearances and approvals. After that point, then of course we have to enter an agreement with them. But we are pre-positioned to be able to move as quickly as we can unless those approvals have been received through the state office. There is still a number of other permitting concerns that still need to be worked through, so we'll be working in the interim in order to, again, pre-position ourselves to move as quickly as possible. That includes a contract with a construction group, a bureau of construction group, to be able to actually mobilize and to address that particular debris slide. Your point is well taken in terms of any potential rain on snow events or winter, general winter events, even this recent storm, and the threat to downstream community. That is exactly what the NRCS is looking to add value to, a number of homes impacted, that consideration that they have to take into account. So I hear you, everything that I have phrased this is in terms of we need to address this immediately because of the potential for a pineapple express, but thank you for that.
And also I want to, on the great side, the road cleaning, snow removal has been outstanding in the Coffee Creek area and the North County in general, so I want to, it's probably the best it's been in several years. So I want to thank, and thank your crews for their hard work and really have been able to find a flaw in what they did, so.
We appreciate that tremendously, with limited crew, they are working very hard to do that, and I hope that each of you for your districts could say something similar, but thank you for that.
And then lastly, which is a little off the topic, but the... And then lastly, which is a little off the topic, but, uh, the, um, fire regulation with the road, no, excuse me, the road and wildland fire regulations, uh, they're asking for a 15-day, uh, comment out of the state. Right, because I read through them in my limited knowledge of, of them the other day, um, actually last night, but for example, all new bridges have to have a 75,000 pound rating, uh, which would, uh, kind of wipe out any private bridges in the county, uh, or, or new development with private bridges. Is, is there something as a county that we should be writing comments to that in, in this 15-day period? Or is this something that you're up to speed with yet? I know that you're overwhelmed with a thousand other things.
Uh, no, I'd say thank you for bringing that to my attention. I haven't reviewed, um, that document or, or even thought of comments yet. So thank you for bringing that to my attention. Uh, I will have to deliberate whether that's a function of DOT to, to step into, weighed into that discussion. Uh, I'm happy, if that's a decision, I'm happy to, to partake in that. I wonder specifically for private bridges, if that's really something more of a different department within the county perhaps? And I could imagine it being somewhat akin to, to the plus K, I'm just using that term, plus K housing, where it's one of a reduction of standards in order to meet the needs of local residences and being able to, kind of county people to be able to build out as they, as they wish to. So again, I'll say at the moment, I'm not sure what role DOT will have, but it's a, thank you for bringing that up.
I would make the case that DOT in the planning usually takes over road, oversees, makes comments on projects, so.
In terms of referrals within departments, that is, that is true, but it's something I would have to coordinate with the planning department to.
I just made up my, my case and my.
Fair enough.
Fair enough. All right, thank you.
Any other questions for interim director? I do have one question, comment, I guess. Uh, our first snowstorm, the snow removal was great in my district. This time not so much. Um, I have been receiving some complaints from people in Cat Palm South. Um, there's, still hasn't been a snowplow on the county road on Lake Mountain Road to the county line or, um, or on through a, be a secondary road, uh, Burgess Road in Xenia. Um, those roads still haven't been cleared. We haven't really had any substantial snow since the day after Christmas, so it's been over a week, and those people have been complaining. So I don't know, um, I know very limited resources in South County, but, um, and I'm, I would, if you have time or something, maybe we can talk later if there's anything we can do to figure out how to, how to address those concerns.
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate that. That is exactly what I was hoping for in terms of specific problems, specific roads. I would have to go back to road supervisor informant to see how those roads are prioritized within the system, uh, in the South County. I will say that they have, uh, struggled because some PGE, PG&E lines have been down across roads that has limited their ability to get to some areas. I'm not sure if that's applicable to those specific roads you mentioned. Uh, and I'll also say that they did have some equipment failures, uh, some, they broke a grader, uh, because the road collapsed and it was on order, and they were, they were working to get that up and running as quickly as they can. Uh, there gets to be a point where, uh, the snow levels, regardless of how long ago maybe that snowfall actually was, the limit of our, uh, trucks to be able to actually move or make a dent in, in some particular areas. We do have a 10-wheeled dump truck that does have a plow, and with that being the only larger piece of equipment available, I believe, in that particular area, if I'm not wrong, until the grader is up and running, uh, it may be some time, but I can look into that issue to give you any more specific information offline perhaps.
Okay, yeah, and I'll, I'll, I'll follow you later.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anything else?
Be back for further items if you figure something, so.
Okay. Uh, do we have any other department heads?
Yes.
Oh.
Happy New Year. Lisa Lozier, interim director of building and planning. And I actually hadn't intended on speaking, um, but I think it, there's a couple of things that I would like to bring up that are, are pretty important, um, to Supervisor Grove's, particularly on the Board of Forestry, the 15-day comments. Um, it is important that we do take a look through those because it's not just necessarily the bridge changes that are coming up, but, uh, I don't know if they kept the additional changes as far as rich land development, um, setbacks, uh, road, um, construction. So when I was going through some of the webinars, they had some pretty significant changes. So, um, I will definitely be taking a look at what they've proposed, um, for their final document, and, um, I will be working with, uh, David Kolbeck on that to see, you know, if, if there's any specific concerns that we feel need to be addressed. So, um, that for sure. And also, um, wanted to let you know that, uh, we did get our division director for building and planning for the Cannabis Department. Um, that, uh, position has been posted. It's my understanding that we have had at least one person apply. Um, I haven't had time to look at any applications. Um, we are also working on recruitment for environmental specialists for cannabis and also for accounting technician, which is, um, a really big hole for our department right now. Um, it's, it's just created a lot of extra work. And, uh, that said, I would like to thank Lisa McNeely and Laura Lyons for really stepping up to the plate to help our department because they have gone above and beyond to make things functional for us, and I really, really appreciate it. Um, uh, the other thing, I'm kind of jumping around, so I apologize, that, um, I think is very important to bring up is our, uh, the gentleman that we have been working with, with Cal Fire, Kyle Johnson, is retired. Um, we have, um, he's been working with Todd Wallace, who is basically his backup, but this will also be a very significant loss for us, um, because we have, uh, depended on Kyle for reviewing building permits, um, all planning projects, doing field reviews for us. So, um, this is a loss that I think we'll be discussing internally and maybe seeing if we can come up with some suggestions to, for, um, something, a more permanent way to make sure that we have somebody available, uh, more regularly to sign off on the building permits and planning projects to keep them moving forward. So, um, I think that's about it for me. If you have any questions, I would be glad to answer them.
Thank you for that, Lisa. Uh, there are drastic changes. I have, of course, not nearly well-versed as you are in this, but there are some big changes. But when I went through it, it looked a lot like just putting lipstick on a pig. But that bridge one really stuck out as a, as a disaster for us, and the bridge line stuff is also not good. So thank you for looking at that.
Uh, I'll say regarding the, all the updates with that, uh, I know RCRC is paying attention to that, and on behalf of all the rural counties, I think they're all on the same page. And so there is a, a larger procession of concerned counties out there as well. We aren't necessarily alone in our communities.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have Sheriff Saxton on the line, and I believe he was trying to report out.
Hey, good morning, board. Happy New Year. Congratulations to Supervisor Fraser for your on-the-position chair. Just wanted to give you a brief update on the jail, um, primarily to dispel some of the misinformation that keeps coming back to me from the public and, um, and, uh, that is the status of the jail and why it's not open. It is not, and I repeat, not because of staffing, um, although staffing is always an issue within the sheriff's office. We gain, uh, staffing, we lose staffing, um, uh, but, and we're continually going through the, the hiring process. We have people that we're sending to the, uh, post academy, even as we speak now, we just sent, uh, one of our, uh, correctional deputies to the post academy, and in six months we'll have him graduated and putting him through the, um, FTO process to become a deputy here in our county. Uh, we have two other people going through backgrounds now to, to become deputies and hit them out the road, uh, hopefully within, uh, two to three months. Um, and we have a couple of people going through backgrounds to become, uh, correctional deputies. But I do want to let you know that staffing is not the issue, that we do not have, uh, the jail open right now. The biggest issue that we're having right now is frontier communications and getting the, uh, the rest of the phone lines, the trunk lines and, uh, and remaining circuits into the jail facility so that we can complete the 911 system and other phone lines that are necessary for the, uh, the internet communications or the rest of the circuits that we need to, to complete, uh, those projects there. And until we have a firm date on getting those, uh, input and completed there, we can't, uh, continue on with the, with the remainder of the training. Uh, as you all know, training in the intricate circuits, uh, that we have in the jail facility, uh, if we started training on personnel right now and without knowing when we were actually going to be opening up the facility, it would pretty much be wasted time. Uh, if, if we trained people now and not knowing when we're actually going to get in there, by the time we do open it, um, we're basically going to be retraining people again, and that's going to be, uh, a wasted effort, wasted time, wasted money. Um, so we're, we're waiting until we get firm, uh, commitments on when, uh, those lines are going to be input, uh, and operational before we can get everything going on that. Uh, the best guess we have right now, the, uh, the best that we can hope for is, uh, we're looking at the end of March to become operational on that. But, uh, I just wanted to report out to you that everything is, is kind of hinging on getting those lines in. Uh, that's going to be AT&amp;T, uh, waiting for Frontier. We've got IC Solutions, uh, which is our inmate, uh, tablet system and communication system on that. We've got Day Wireless, uh, we've got Guardian RFID. Those are the, uh, systems that are in place to track inmate movements and, uh, and help our correctional deputies, uh, ensure that, um, various checks are done and movements around inside the facility, um, and things of that nature. Also, uh, keep, uh, commissary supplies to ensure that ordering, things of that nature are done, uh, more efficiently, uh, using electronics and, and, uh, and communications. So, uh, again, uh, to keep you up to date, staffing is not the reason why the jail is not open at this time. That's, that's the biggest thing I wanted to let you know. So, uh, with that, um, do you have any questions for me?
Anyone have any questions for Sheriff Saxton? Go ahead.
Um, hey, Sheriff. Uh, this is more of a request. A lot of people down river had requested to hopefully see a little bit of, uh, regular sheriff's presence, uh, with the power, having been out since the 26th and expected to be up until the 14th. Um, people don't have lights, it's dark, and people are concerned about some of the crime increasing after about a week of the power being out. Um, so if it's at all possible to have some regular presence in the Downriver areas without power, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Brown. I appreciate that. I've been in contact with several people down river, uh, either by phone or by, uh, Facebook messaging. We've addressed that. I've advised or controlled it whenever we have sufficient staffing, not answering calls of, of, uh, severe nature in, uh, in the rest of the county that we get down there. So we are addressing that.
Okay, thanks so much.
Do you have any other department heads?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other movement on Zoom, and I'm not seeing any from the room.
All right. We will move on to the Department of CAO.
Yeah, just a quick report on, on recruitment. David touched on it a little bit. We've, uh, have the, uh, professional consulting group, CPS, that's doing our recruitment for both the DOT director and our planning director. Today's the last day of that recruitment. Uh, we've had a very good response for the position of DOT. They'll be giving us a short list sometime, uh, this month, anticipating starting interviews either later this month or first of next month. The planning position, not such a, a great turnout in applications. Um, we've received enough to, uh, to have a field, but it has been a little lackluster. We were hoping for, for more applicants, but we'll keep you informed on, on that as it goes. And as David also said, the division director position has been posted, and we also did that in a, um, until filled. So as we get qualified applications, we can start, uh, interviewing immediately. So if we have one qualified, we will probably schedule a interview with that person shortly.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? All right, moving on. Reports from members of board supervisors. I'll start on your end, Keith.
Okay. Um, with the holidays, we, uh, haven't done as much, but I'd want to give an update on the TMZ. I told you last time that, um, that Liam is, uh, working on a, uh, white paper of questions that I hope that, that I and he meet next week with, uh, with those with the TRR key staff. And then by the, uh, they're going to need an answer by the 15th of, actually previously that. We'll have to have a reconsideration vote before the 15th of February. So we are under a time constraint here, so if we can't come to an agreement, uh, we'll come back to the board as a whole and get a presentation for the board's hold to decide on, on the vote on water flow vary votes. So that's all I have. If there's any questions?
Any questions? Professor Cox?
I have nothing to report today.
All right. Supervisor Brown?
All right. Um, well, like I said, the power's been out in Downriver, um, in the Sawyer, Hawkins Bar, Burnt Ranch area since the 26th. It's approximately just a little shy of a thousand residents. Um, the main challenge is many of the residents depend on electricity for pumping water, heating their homes, and getting phone and internet. So many people are left without communication. Um, I don't think anyone's been injured, so that's been good. And a lot of the community members and neighbors have been proactive, making sure elderly and people that need assistance are, uh, checked on and have been tended to. Ed with OES has been very helpful, as well as PG&E, in making sure we're getting everything we need. So the Burnt Ranch School has a generator and is open for school. The Sawyer Wayside Chapel has a generator and is passing out emergency food boxes and the blanket flashlight boxes that PG&E brought. Jeffrey England brought, from the food bank, brought, uh, many pallets of water, pallets of food. He's making regular food drops down there. Um, it's been really nice for the community, and he's also raised $21,000, um, from some foundations and the general public, um, including the Connell Foundation and Reading, uh, to assist with gas vouchers with propane or, um, gas because it's much more expensive than PG&E power to run your home and everything on a generator. Um, the Red Cross had opened up in Willow Creek to assist with the, the Willow Creek residents that experienced storm damage, as well as Trinity County residents, but I believe in a period of three days, only six people showed up, and so that they couldn't, they couldn't, uh, keep that facility open with it being underutilized. Um, I think that's most of the update. You know, the biggest thing, there's a lot of, uh, elderly out there, some of them have oxygen machines, um, so we're just trying to make sure that no one's gone unnoticed and forgotten. Um, and it would be helpful, I drove around and toured a decent amount of the areas, and, um, as, uh, David Kolbeck said, a lot of the roads are open for single lane traffic, but the amount of wood debris that's going to be left over for the months to come is going to be significant. So I'll be curious if the RCD will have any ability to, um, assist with some of the community chipping that's going to be well needed as we get into spring and summer. We don't want a bunch of slash sitting around everywhere. Um, uh, I think that's everything to report from Downriver.
Jeremy, have you discussed with, uh, RCD or the, the Solid Waste about them renting our top grinder?
I believe the top grinder and Richard, maybe you can correct me, but I believe the top grinder is still waiting for EPA certification.
Yeah, the, uh, Diane on that, I haven't got an update on if it's been certified yet, but it has been considered to assist. it has been considered to assist in all these situations. So I'll get that information with Diane.
Thanks. Thank you.
Supervisor Goode.
I did not have anything to report out. I did talk to, as Keith mentioned, two members of TRP and TMC about the vote we had a couple weeks back. I spoke with Paolo Giulio for three hours, not too long ago, a few days back. I spoke with the second in charge of TRP, Chad Abel, about my reasons and decisions. We are currently looking at some things for the future possibly, beginning of next year's new flow schedule and trying to make sure that we get things right, or at least model what they were trying to do this year so that we see what the percentage of modeling and how correct it was so it can be implemented properly and monitored properly during our next year's flow schedule. And I got an email, I think yesterday or day before, from Mike Dixon, and I think myself, Keith, Mike, and Chad are going to have a long meeting coming up sometime, not as soon as yet, this week or next, to hash out those things. So it looks like it's all moving along pretty well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't have anything to report out at this point. Be adding some later when we do the ad hoc report outs, which we'll jump right into. Right now, report from the cannabis cultivation program ad hoc.
Fairly easy. We didn't meet over the holidays. We have had some questions that will, I'll check with Margaret today about who's doing the DCC work. And next Thursday, we will be meeting with our new consultant on the ordinance writing. Correct, Margaret?
Correct on the sixth.
On the sixth. So we will be setting a priority list for her to work on. And this is right now just about cannabis, so if any board member has thoughts about what priority, email Margaret with those, and if anyone's mixed on, contact me or Dan. And that's all we have. Any questions?
I do have a question. I don't know if it's appropriate for ad hoc, but you can probably answer it for Margaret. Can I ask whether the consult, one of the attorneys from your office was at some point back, my understanding, assigned to work with the cannabis department, some sort of oversight position? Is that happening? Did that happen or?
It has, and it is happening.
Okay. And could you remind me of that associate's name?
Sean Cameron.
Thank you.
Yes, Sean has been part of every ad hoc meeting for the last month anyway, and he's coming up to speed. Already, I, they were sending out, when the appendix C went out and they looked at them and then sent them back, his job is to send back and write letters. So I know he's done that because I'm getting complaints from growers that they didn't like what was in the letter, so I know he's doing his job.
Yeah, and he also participates in our Wednesday meeting we have with the consultants. So he's been, he's been very hands-on.
Are we receiving very many appendix Cs at this time?
We don't have an update the last two weeks, so I guess that Lisa might have an update when she does her commercial cannabis program later.
I don't have anything.
David? Sorry, I was on the spot there.
Oh, David Kolbeck again. I was just going to say, yes, this item is agenda is for discussion, item 4.15 and an update with the cannabis program. So I'm happy to answer questions at that point and take it off of AdHoc's desk.
Okay, thank you. All right, and moving on, the report from limited density rural dwelling ad hoc. We haven't met officially since before the holidays. We did forward a possible ordinance to Lisa Lozier so she can look through it at her convenience and offer feedback. And I would like to get together with the others on the ad hoc for a face-to-face meeting here in the next week or so, but I haven't reached out, scheduled a time and kind of worked forward on that a little more and possibly have some other, maybe add some other options to our limited density rural dwelling stuff going forward. So anyway, we are making progress, albeit slow. We are moving forward. Do you have anything?
No, I think, I think we have the ordinance fairly well written at this time. I suspect that we'll get through it in the next couple of months, and hopefully it goes through without any difficulty. So I hope that everybody out there is looking forward to it and will get it. I think we're on our way to getting it. So let's hope it all works out fine for everyone.
Any questions? All right. With that, we will move on to county matters unless anyone would request a short break before we should dive into county matters. All right, we're all good? All right. So these items are include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board, staff, or public may request items to be heard out of order. Does anybody have any desire to hear anything out of order?
I'm going to have some discussion about 4.3, which may take a bit. If you want to move that back out of consideration of the rest, I could do that. If not, we can take it in order.
Kind of do both these are going to be kind of conversation intensive, so. Yeah, I think we're going to be, we're going to be here for a while, so we'll just take it in order. All right, board supervisors, item 4.1, discuss providing emergency funding to Southern Trinity Area Rescue STAR to continue providing 911 ambulance services in Southern Trinity County. Fiscal impact of $73,440 from general fund for fiscal year 2122. And do we have Brooke and Springer on Zoom?
Yes, I'm here. Can I start talking or how does this work?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Sorry, I'll put my hand down. Hold on. So you guys all got the thing in your agenda, what this is about. This is not a new situation. I'm going to give just a quick little background. It's been going on for over three years, and we, before COVID, when we could move freely, we did meet with Mr. Coons a couple times to discuss it because approximately three and a half years ago, the federal government changed the regulations that monitor the money that comes into the clinic that funds STAR's money loss, and they no longer are allowed to give any money to emergency services. So we lost any funding from them at that point. And up until that, now we've been operating off of other grants, fundraisers, contracts that we can get things, and have been scraping by while we've been trying to figure out a long-term or permanent solution to maintaining ambulance service in that third of the county. And we have come to the point where we don't have any more options. We, the good news is, is that since I put the request in to be on the agenda, we did have the community rally along with some money from the community service district down there that we were expecting to come in. So our needs are down to about 53,000 instead of 70. So that is somewhat good news. And that's to get us through, like it says, this fiscal year. We made it through the last two because we were able to take the fire contract with the August complex, and it pays quite well. And that is what funded us in that, because you probably are wondering, how did you fund yourself since it's been over three years? So that did that. I have been working with Suzie in your guys' office. She's helped us put in some applications for money from the state. Unfortunately, we got news yesterday that the big one that we were hoping for that would have funded us for three years of operations got denied. She is going to help us apply for the second round of that that's coming up, but it takes them up to six months to make those decisions or more. And I don't have my hopes set super high, obviously. So what we are asking is for some emergency funding to continue providing ambulance service. Unfortunately, the responsibility of providing emergency medical service to citizens falls on the county, not the state or the federal government, and it's, that is a separate issue that I would like to bring up for the long-term solution with the help of the board supervisors because this is not, this is not something that's just happening in Trinity County, and I believe that the rural counties together might need to take this to the state because we're losing our emergency services in most rural counties because of block funding, because it's not a profitable business, obviously. It's just a service. So immediately, we're asking for funding because if we don't get some sort of emergency funding, we will have to shut our doors and stop providing 911 medical service to the lower third of the county approximately sometime in March, maybe April. That's how far we'll make it. And we have tapped most of our immediate resources and been trying for longer-term solutions for quite some time. So that's the immediate situation. If anybody has any questions or anything, at any time, let me know. I can stop talking. I have some long-term ideas because I know that the county cannot afford to supplement the ambulance service down there to this level on a regular basis, year after year, most likely. But we're going to need help from, from the county to work on some of those long-term solutions. I'm more than willing to put whatever time I need to in to do that. And I don't know if this is the time to discuss those solutions now or if that's something that should be done later. Guess I should see if you guys have questions or comments at this point.
Does anyone have any questions for Brooke?
Yeah, Brooke, did you say that the 73,000 went down to about 50,000?
Yeah. After I got that, had that budget and put together the report for you guys, we got some monies in from our Ruth Lake Community Service District and the community sitting in the state that STAR was in, held some rather epic fundraisers and brought that number down. That being said, probably epic fundraisers like that will only be that successful once a year in areas rural and poor as we live in.
Congratulations and thank you.
Brooke, this is Keith Groves. What's your income? I see a measure Z on your, what's your income base right now? Where's it come from?
Okay, so Major Z is from Humboldt County. There, that's an emergency services tax that they have in Humboldt County to fund emergency services and such, and we qualify because we cover, about 25% of our calls involve Humboldt County area or Humboldt County citizens, and that is a contribution for us to do that, which is, if they weren't doing that, obviously, we would have been gone three years ago. It's a significant amount. And then our other income comes from, the other main income is billing, patient billing, which can bring anywhere yearly in from $14,000 to $30,000 to $40,000, but that's very varied, obviously. We can't count on that as a constant. And then we get the $10,000 a year from Trinity County. And it has been at $10,000 a year since I've started with STAR, so I'm guessing going over 15 years. So it's something that we've been asking to discuss anyways because that doesn't even cover our insurance to maintain an ambulance. And then our other income aside, little bits and pieces that I'm not sure if it was broken down in that budget, I don't get to play with that part. I just get handed a sheet of paper, but it was small fundraisers and donations and things of that nature.
So you don't have any tax base down there?
We don't have a.
Trinity County tax base, I mean.
Well, no, we discussed, we have discussed. I think we discussed with Mr. Coons years ago, the idea of it, and it was John Finley at the time, of trying to set up a service district where we can get some tax money. We did a lot of math on it, and the amount, this was over a year ago, but the amount that we would have to add to people's taxes to make enough to provide that income was quite high, and we got a very poor response from the community about that idea as well. We are willing to try anything. I'm definitely have my, putting all our work into setting that up and the year or two process it takes to get it put through and the fact that it won't actually fund us, and we have to get there in the first place. Because we don't have a large tax, we don't have any large, although we serve like a third of the county's physical land, we don't have that big of a population compared to, say, we were built.
What is it?
Chair, may I ask Commissioner Director Hamilton, how is some thoughts on this matter? It would be really very helpful to have her come up and.
Okay. Go ahead and jump right in here.
Hi, good morning. Liz Hamilton, Health and Human Services Director, also serves public health. And we are able to provide funding to STAR through IGT, and we like to have further discussions with Brooke on that. So if that can be helpful, I'll just cut to the Jason Xavier funding.
Okay, and do you think that you'll be able to provide sufficient funding, or is this going to be like a part, a portion of the funding that they need, or will you be able to provide emergency funding to cover their needs?
We could provide, from what I'm hearing, it's around 50,000, maybe a little more, and we can cover that.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions for Brooke?
I have a question for Ms. Williams. Is that just IGT funding, or is HHS realignment a part of that, or does it apply?
Health realignment is separate funding, and we could evaluate. First, we'll look to IGT funding, and if there's not enough in the balance of that, we'll use health realignment.
So Liz, are you, how long would it take for you to make sure that you get all the paperwork and all that together to pull that off? I guess what I'm looking at, should we put a continuance on this item today and wait for you to put this together, or should we pass this today? Or I'm not asking you, or should we vote on it today and then this would be just in case yours doesn't come through?
I'm confident in our ability to provide the funds. Our IGT council would need to vote, and, you know, we've had recent discussions with other ambulance service, and I know that that went through very swiftly. And because we already have a funding stream set up with STAR, there shouldn't be any impediment to that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other technical questions? Do we have any public comment on this item?
Chair, if I may, Brooke raised her hand before we go into public comment.
All right. Yeah, go ahead, Brooke. Again, see that.
Oh, no, that's okay, sorry. I just want to say thank you to Lisa for coming forward, and I, I'm not familiar with how things work on the government level a lot, so I appreciate you guys putting up with me going about it this way and trying. And then I do have Lisa's email, so I'll be in contact for her. That's wonderful. Do you have a question for her? Is this a one-time deal? And the reason I'm asking that is because I would like to put one more question to the board if it is.
So Liz, if you want, you can answer that from there, and I can pass it on.
I am open to having further conversations beyond this round. So I can't promise, but open to further conversations.
Okay, that's wonderful. I will take that conversation with Lisa, sounds like it would be the best thing to do. I do just want to put the seed and the, out there for the board, though, that throughout our. our discussions, it probably will come up that at some point, it would still be to the county's benefit to possibly try to take this to the rural county coalition. And this is, this is making big waves, but at the state level, I think that eventually that it needs to change, that the state takes some responsibility for its 911 service. It has been super frustrating for us and I see it, to have to try to provide this service on no funds yet. The 911 number is there. We tell our citizens that that's what they call an emergency, but then we don't have the funding to actually back it, whether it comes to law enforcement or fire or medical. And that's not just a Trinity County problem. So if, if we want to eventually take that road, I would love to work with whoever works with the rural county's coalition to take it that far. Because eventually, it could save the county money for all of its emergency services if we asked our most wealthy state to actually help out with these kinds of things that are somewhat basic, basic services we all expect. I don't know. That's just my second thought. I'll talk with Lisa about the immediate future because that is obviously more important at the moment.
All right, thank you.
And Brooke, I would just recommend that you connect with our Public Health Branch Director, Marcy Kedso. But I will reach out to you, make sure that connection's made.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any public comment on this item?
I see none in the room. I have no one in chat and no raised hands.
I have one more question for Brooke. Would you like a motion first or?
However you want to do it.
Brooke, I think I heard you say that your income from operating the service delivery is 14,000 to 50,000 dollars?
For the, like billing, patient billing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Wow, I think we need to get your service up here because I think I've covered that like every year from stupid things I do.
Well, we, we are raising our prices because we found out we have the lowest prices in the industry practically. Unfortunately, that doesn't change when you are working with insurances, Medi-Cal or Medicare. That only changes for private pay people. Because the insurances pay a set amount no matter what you say you're going to bill. But, and we, the reason why it's still buried is we have a fairly large amount of people that use our system down there that don't have any content information or we can never actually bill them. And they obviously don't have insurance either. They're, you know, that's, that's the nature of the business anyway.
Okay. So is there something that we can help you with that on?
On the billing side, we actually are pretty efficient. We have a billing company and they only take a percent if we get paid. Otherwise, they do the work for free and that work, and they are pretty good at what they do. And we have, within the last year, made the arrangements that when we use the ambulance coming out of Humboldt County for mutual aid, sorry, I couldn't get the word, we used to make zero every time we handed off a patient to them. Like say we need to go back or we need a different level of service, we would hand off someone to them and that would make us $0. And they actually set a contract up with us to give us $300 every time we do that, which is a huge difference between zero and, so that aspect, I think we have pretty much done everything we can when it comes to billing. We, we only run 200 calls a year, you know, on average. So it's just a large area. I did, oh, this is an aside and it might up for the, the public health to hear this too, I don't know that it should matter or not. I did put in an application for Title III. I didn't understand the parameters completely. We obviously service a ton of forest service land and do go on calls there. It would take me an extended amount of time to average out the exact amount of time. But if that is possible to be a supplement, to take some of the burden off something else, that is an option as well, obviously, being that we have so much landmass in our area that is just forest service land and we do go out there, so.
Thank you, Brooke. With that, just one statement for Dr. Coons. If I was reading between the lines there, this would be one where equity monies could go to.
Very possible, yes.
Because, well, I don't need to go into why, but that's something to keep in mind. And with that, I-
Are you gonna make a motion because I'm gonna kind of give some background? Are you gonna make a motion? But for your discussion, I'll step out.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Using IGT money, we don't need board approval to do that. So, so the motion, if you're gonna make a motion, I would, I would recommend that we bring this back after Liz has met with the IGT board. And if that money can be utilized, then throw in our support of that. If not, then that's when we would discuss funding. Because right now, the way it's written is this would come out of general fund and that's not what we're, we have, we have additional funding. So motion we made would be, I guess, to continue until we can report back with IGT.
Okay, that's exactly what I'll do. I'll move that we continue this item until we get a report back from Dr. Coons on, and Liz on if the IGT monies covered this one-time cost.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I would have one request that is, I'm fine with that as long as it's before the end of March, when the money runs out. It would be nice if we could have that.
I'm getting nods on that.
Yeah, if, if you'd like me to amend that, I would amend that we have that before, before the last meeting, if that were a report back on.
Can we get an amended second?
Yes.
Thank you. Seeing no other discussion, motion by Supervisor Groves, second by Supervisor Cox. Supervisor Cox, how do you vote? Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Frazier?
Aye. Okay, item 4.2. Clerk of the Board, item 4.2, appoint supervisors to represent the county on various boards, commissions, committees, and task force for calendar year 2022. No fiscal impact. All right. First off, as we dive into this, I would ask if there are any supervisors who would like to be relieved of one of the committees, commissions, or boards that they're on? And then we can go from there. If there's anything you really hate and you want to get out of it, I'll see if somebody else will take your spot. Do we need to add one at the group? Two, two. What are we adding? Adding two. Okay, and those are both, just one person?
Correct. So we need to add to our, our annual appointment list, an appointment to the Weaverville Community Forest and the Fire Safe Council.
Okay, thank you. So I don't know how you guys want to go through this. Do you want to just start at the top of the list and go through?
Start with A.
Start with A and work our way down. And then we can, I have who are the primary and alternates, and then if anybody would like to change or we can go from there. So starting off, the Airport Advisory Committee, which means quarterly, we have Groves as primary and Cox as the alternate. Are you guys all right with that? And I, it sounds good to me. Behavioral Health Advisory Board. Supervisor Brown is primary and myself is the alternate. Supervisor Brown, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if I've been a helpful asset to, I'm fine remaining on it.
Okay. And I likewise haven't been that involved with that one, but we can do better this year, right? California State Association of Counties, CSAC, Supervisor Groves as primary and-
We, we've already picked that, actually. Is that not correct, Marty?
Correct, CSAC is done before summer.
Yeah.
And that's one we have to do, so.
And you guys are already on there, Groves and Cox. Child Abuse Prevention Council, Supervisor Brown and-
Changed when we re-adopted and you keep the CSAC.
Yeah. Oh, and so it's Keith and Liam on CSAC, all right. And Child Abuse Prevention Council, we have Supervisor Brown and Supervisor Gogan.
Fine with me, Liz Gogan wants to switch alternate and primary.
I'm good with that, I'm good.
All right, so we'll keep that one the same. Child Care and Development Planning Council, also Supervisor Brown and Supervisor Gogan. No switch?
No, it's okay.
So you're relieved? All right. Are you all right with that?
Perfect.
Okay. First five, we have Supervisor Cox, you still, all right, I figured you would be. Coliseum Glen Trinity County Community Action Partnership. I'm the primary and I'm okay with that unless somebody else wants to take that over. And-
This actually has two primaries with an alternate currently selected from the public?
And I think actually the way it's been happening is the, the public is one of the primaries and Liam's been the alternate.
Okay.
So that's how we, we've been doing it. That's how we're supposed to, but that hasn't been, not been done.
That's what I've remembered, so that works.
All right, thank you. And you're all right with that?
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right, Community Corrections Partnership, that's Dr. Coons. Are you?
Yeah, I was putting that when Supervisor Finley stepped down. So I was based on that and I'm fine if you want to, if you want to continue unless there's a board member that-
Anyone really want that job?
Not that I want the job, I just don't really know what that one is.
Well, Captain, Chief Provation Officer, she could explain that.
Good morning, Chairman Frazier, members of the Board, Ruby Fierro, Chief Provation Officer. And the CCP Commission, we meet quarterly and that's regarding the AB 109 realignment funds and how it's utilized in this community.
Okay, thank you.
So is everybody all right with Richard Coons as primary on that still?
We want to have an update that she said is quarterly running by.
Okay. Good catch. Disaster Council, and this one is chairman, vice chairman. So that will be myself and Supervisor Groves. Emergency Food and Shelter, also Emergency Medical Services. Well, I'll be updated to myself being the primary and Supervisor Groves the alternate. Getting down to Environmental Services, JPA, which is an RCRC subcommittee, we have Supervisor Brown and Diane Rader. You all right with that still?
Yeah.
All right. Forest County School Coalition, the sort of secure rural schools, we have Supervisor Cox and Supervisor Gogan. Still good with that?
It, it does, you meet last year or don't?
It don't.
No. Okay. Golden State Finance Authority, we have Supervisor Brown, Supervisor Cox. Natural Resources Collaborative, TCCG. We have Supervisor Brown as the primary and myself as the alternate. You want to keep it that way?
Let's see, I'm interested in switching it up.
At this point, I, I'm all right with being an alternate. Highway 36 Committee, and this one is one that's been the district vice supervisor. District Four will have, almost have a piece of this, Highway 36 now, but not quite, I think so. Maybe you will. But I'm fine with that, staying on there. Highway 299 Committee, we have Supervisor Brown, Supervisor Gogan. Unless you guys want to switch the, and make Supervisor Gogan primary?
No, I mean, there, I said there's not much of a regular meeting.
I, we never had a 36 meeting last year, so.
We don't even have a Highway 3, so.
Yeah, okay, well. Housing Rehabilitation and Business Loan Committee, we have Supervisor Cox as the primary and myself as the alternate. I don't remember a meeting.
No activity.
So we'll leave that the same. LAFCO, we have Supervisor Groves, myself, and Supervisor Cox. If there's, I'm all right with that unless Supervisor Gogan were-
Well, I, I would say that as chair, Dan, you pick up a lot of stuffs that I think is, that this is one that another supervisor could pick up and say you a little bit agree.
Yeah, the, this is one at least that we usually meet here after board meetings, so it's not as difficult. But if Supervisor Gogan would like to jump on there, I would be more than happy to step down. So we'll put Liam in there and invite him like Tuesday. That is, yeah, it'll be the third Tuesday of every month. It's right here in this room after the board meeting. Sometimes the board meeting takes too long or late.
It depends on, actually, right now, I think it's every month.
Yeah, we have that every month.
It's every other month.
Well, sometimes it's every season.
It depends on what's going on.
It's scheduled for every month, but it doesn't happen every month.
All right, NACO.
I'll try that some of the, lead on that one.
No, you'll be one of, there's three primaries on that one. So you'll be on LAFCO with, with Jill and Keith. And then the NACO, we have Supervisor Cox as the primary and myself as the alternate.
Actually, that got traded to Jeremy Skid halfway through the year.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
So are, are you all right with that?
Yeah.
Still be, be the lead on NACO. North Cal DMS, I have Supervisor Cox and Supervisor Gogan. You guys are all right with that? Northern Rural Training and Employment Consortium, Nortec, Supervisor Groves.
That's fine.
North Coast Unified Air Quality Management District, myself as primary and Supervisor Gogan as the alternate. I'm okay with that one. If we ever meet in person, it'll be in Eureka, so the travel will be a lot easier for myself. North Coast Resource Partnership, Brown and Groves, unknown meeting schedule. Are you guys okay with that one still?
Yeah.
Yeah, aren't we both?
We're both on it as equals, evidently.
Yeah, that-
Two primaries.
That one's two primaries.
Have you, did you meet last year?
Yes. Actually, that's, that's a-
Ordinarily.
That's an important one.
Okay. Now I can't find where we are.
No, RCD, RCD.
Northwest California.
Yeah. Northwest California Resource Conservation and Development, we have Cox and Gogan. You're-
Julie, good.
Path, it's the second Thursday of odd months. We have Supervisor Brown, Supervisor Cox. You good with that?
Yeah.
PSA 2, Agency on Aging, we have Supervisor Gogan, Supervisor Cox, you're, you guys okay with that one still?
Yeah.
RCRC? RCRC, we have Supervisor Brown and Supervisor Cox. Are you guys good with that? Your-
And I believe technically the broadband, the RCRC's broadband initiative is bundled in with that. I don't know if you want to list it separately or not. It was when that formation happened, I believe it was in August. We both, we all voted on it already and I'm the, I'm the primary in-
Okay, and you're also that much tied in with the Golden State Finance. Okay, and you're also that much tied in with the Golden State Finance, I think.
Correct.
So I think we're, we're alright there. So, you're the RCRC. Rand Board, meets as needed, that one will be myself and Supervisor Groves. And Social Services Transportation Advisory will also be myself and Supervisor Groves. Solid Waste Sharing Panel, we have Supervisor Groves as the only one, anyone else interested in that?
I believe we had a representative from District Four, couldn't be a member of the public, so I believe we adopted that at the last board meeting, there are two additional members.
Am I right?
The Nick Wilde and one other person.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't met.
So you're back with them next?
Superior California Economic Development District, SCED is Supervisor Brown and Supervisor Cox.
I'm gonna switch to primary.
So Cox is primary and you okay being the alternate?
Yep.
Trinity County Commission on Aging, we have Supervisor Groves, I didn't have an alternate on that one?
No, we haven't met in four years or something.
So are you good moving down position? Alright.
Aging gracefully.
Trinity County Fire Chief Association, we have Supervisor Cox and Supervisor Gogan, are you guys good with that one still?
Jill, do you want to switch to Ben Dylan first here? You want to say?
Here's the primary, alright. Trinity County Fish and Game Advisory Commission meets quarterly, that's Supervisor Gogan, anybody have any issue with that? Okay, the TMC meets bi-monthly, and I have Supervisor Groves as primary and Gogan as the alternate.
So this one I've agreed to switch with Liam, but with the understanding that we need to figure out this winter flow issue together first, so yes.
Okay, so we're gonna switch that one to Supervisor Gogan as primary and Supervisor Groves as the alternate.
So Keith, just one question, as we switch. You as the primary are now working on the final board document, now working on the science part, will both stay?
Right, so I'll, I'll stay the lead in the administration part and you stay the lead in the science, and then when it brings, when it comes together, then you, you would have to vote as the package as the whole.
Alright, sounds like you guys, thank you, I think you guys have worked that out amongst yourselves. Firesafe Council, we have Supervisor Cox, you're good with that? We're Real Community Forest, Supervisor Groves, that's something you.
Was I on this before?
Yes. It got established last year.
Okay.
And the two came forward together, it was in the book that you.
I bullied you out of it?
You did.
Okay. I, I'm glad to stay there, it wasn't on the list of the, of things and I don't think, now I know why she's been sending me information on We're Real Community Forest, okay.
Do you want to not do it?
No, I'll, I'll, I'll do it, you have, you have enough.
You guys, alright, so I think.
I apologize for that.
I think that's everything.
I would like to say regarding NACO, that is a challenging one, it's an expensive thing to participate in, all these events are indefinitely upscale, hotels ranging from Alaska to Colorado to Washington DC. With my time, I'm able to go and attend, like I've never gone to a NACO conference because they're, they're expensive. And RCRC does eat up a decent amount of my allocated dollars for travel, so I guess I'm looking for a little bit of guidance maybe or something, like this year, the NACO meeting's in Alaska.
What's up here?
Next month.
There's no fish there, don't worry. So I'm, I'm happy to do it and I think it would be beneficial, a lot of what NACO does is upper level with federal influence, things like that. I, you know, I don't think Trinity County has traditionally really participated much in.
Well, Judy used to go.
Okay.
And, and I will say that in the past, and probably Susan's gonna correct me, but the long past, that extra monies, the monies that other board members didn't spend would go to offset the NACO issues.
Okay, well, I'll be looking into that.
She's shaking her head, so I got something right.
Okay.
Do you have the dates of those all questions?
I'm the primary, so I'll, I'll take care of it.
Two months a year.
Okay. I think in March or May.
Alright, so you're alright with being the primary there, you're, so you.
Yeah, I'm happy to go on, there's a lot of overlap, but RCRC and NACO. They know a lot of the same people and stuff like that, so.
I think it is important that we, you know, participate, it's, it's always been a time issue before, but I, I've always felt that's, you know, we get these blank travel budgets equal amongst us, but we don't equally spend it like, TMC gets reimbursed, so when we used to travel quite a bit, you know, that's a couple thousand or fifteen hundred dollars comes back to account. So I, I think flexibility as a group is, is important, that, so that's just what I say.
Okay, I'll keep you posted on it. So, do we need to approve this by a motion, or is this just a?
As chairman, you have the authority to rule it, so.
So, so established.
So shall be done.
Yeah.
That was the phrase I was looking for.
Alright, so I think.
And no wrestling matches.
We don't, do we need to open this up to public comment?
Yes, you do.
We do, alright, is there any public comment on this item?
I see none in the room, I have no raised hands and no new chats.
Alright, with that, do you have everything you need?
Yeah, I have a list.
Alright, thank you. Alright. Since we have been forewarned that this is gonna take some time from Supervisor Grove, or Gogan, is anyone, anyone want to take a break before we?
Yeah, why?
Jump into this? Alright, so we will, let's say, let's read adjourn it 10:40. Seven minutes.
Seven minutes.
They said, "People in the 2011 Census District."
That's not the district area.
Yeah, definitely.
But the 2011.
We will call this meeting back to order and moving on to County Administrative Office, item 4.3, authorize department head and the county administrative officer to assign the following classifications use of county vehicles that may be taken home through December 31st of 2023.
Thank you Chairman, Board. We're bringing this forward because it's within our ordinance. Our county code section 2.56, it requires board approval to authorize individuals or classifications to take vehicles home. So I reached out to all of our county departments and these were the positions that were asking that could be used as take-home vehicles. So we have facilities operations superintendent, we have a chief probation officer, a road superintendent, road foreman, shop foreman, I guess I should, after the chief probation officer, the rest of them are all in department transportation. So there's shop foreman, lead mechanic, mechanic, and road maintenance worker. This isn't, these are one individual per classification right now, but it does allow the classification, it does allow the department head to assess what is needed to perform the services of that department and then they would give approval and then run it past me. And if I agree, then it would be, that person would be allowed to use that vehicle for, on a 24-hour basis. I have each department head here if we have questions or I'm willing to take questions regarding this before we get into deeper discussion.
Are there any changes to what was previously done?
I think only the chief probation officer would be, would be an addition. The rest of them are currently using vehicles.
A question on your, what do you have?
Yes.
I have a question on the backup sheet. It's a memo. And when you say what was previously done, this is from March of 2012, and it references the code section. But when I read the two, I see, I see differences between the county code and what's listed in these 10 items.
That was a negotiation, I think you're talking about where going down far. I think you're talking about what was negotiated with the union when we closed satellites down in order to maintain services in those areas. Is that what we're looking at here? Department of Transportation memo, memorandum, yeah, 2012.
Was it the backup demo on this item, I believe?
Yeah, it's March 20, 2012 memorandum. And it was negotiated with the unions in order to close down. And I'm sure that David has, David or Lisa has more information. I wasn't here at that time. But yeah, it was negotiated with the unions in order to close down some of our satellite yards.
Is that what you're talking about?
It is, but my envelope has all, so this still stands, is what you're saying?
I believe so, yes.
Correct, yes. And so it was a change in the ordinance because there was the closing of satellites?
It was never codified at the time. It was just done through what's called a side letter agreement with the union, but it still has the binding effect of a contract.
Okay. Do you have any more questions, Joe?
So, so go ahead and get a little more depth on that real quick. I'm sorry, man, I just wanted to follow up on this. So you have an ordinance that says something and then why don't you have to amend the ordinance?
As long as it doesn't contradict the ordinance, meaning it, you don't have to. Would it be cleaner to do it? Yes. But because it's done by side letter and the board can renegotiate that with the union at any time, it's usually better to keep it separate.
All right, thank you.
So is, are you saying then that there's opportunity to change the ordinance? Because, I mean, when you're saying it doesn't contradict it, to me, it doesn't really align. And so would it be best to discuss the ordinance so that it was clean?
That's the board's pleasure. If the board in, and would like to make this more permanent, then yes, amending the ordinance is the best tactic. If the board wants to keep this kind of fluid from year to year and see how sites are going, if they're going to be closing any additional sites, or if there are going to be any other amendments that are going to be needed, we can do it by side letter as was done in 2012. But again, if, if the board says this is what we want going forward, absolutely, we can amend.
I'd just like to say that I see the value in this, especially after this last storm, when you have people that have their own personal vehicle, maybe it's a two-wheel-drive vehicle, and then they can't even access the transportation yard and the other areas. To me, it makes good sense, especially for the transportation area, for them to have their, their vehicles. When there's an emergency, they don't have to drive an hour and a half or however long to go to the yard to pick up the vehicle, to then drive back to then go do their job.
What scenario is that, Jeremy?
Oh, specifically for Downriver. Steven is our roads department person. I believe he lives in Willow Creek. Yet our transportation department is in Hawkins Bar. There's a yard there. So he has to drive from Willow Creek to Hawkins Bar to pick up a truck with a plow, then to drive back to Solier. He could have started plowing on his way from Willow Creek to Solier and then had to work earlier, essentially, you know? And in that emergency situation, he wouldn't have been able to even get to Hawkins Bar unless he had his work vehicle with his chainsaw and his snow plow. So.
So on Highway 299, heading up there, you can plow?
Yeah, I mean, there's snow on the highway and there were over 200 trees, at least between Solier and Hawkins Bar alone.
Right.
I mean, yeah.
I'm not so sure if that is, well, go ahead.
We'll discuss later. Right now, just, if you can, let's try to keep it to questions.
So I guess I have a couple of questions here about the need of the vehicle. The code section also states the department has assigned take-home vehicles employees have our approvals. So, so long as the assignment does not exceed 12 times in a 12-month period, so once a month, and that works against an on-call duty emergencies or in the work of any considerations, calls for such an assignment. So in the last couple, three years, do we know how many times these people have used their vehicle in emergency services for the county? And somewhere in here, it also says that we would be paying for the fuel. Who pays for the upkeep, the insurance, tires, all those things? Is that paid for by the employee using the vehicle? And the county pays for the gizmo fuel credit card? A little lost on that. So could someone answer that?
Vehicles are 100% maintained by the county. Insurance is covered by the county. So because they're county, they're county-owned.
So it's not just fuel, it's everything?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So I guess my question is, as we look for extra dollars in the road department, because of things we spoke about earlier, not being, it was not being plowed, it would seem to me that, I, I would need to know first of all, how many times that the, the people that are getting these vehicles, where they live, where they have to go to, how many times a year they use that vehicle? And in the case that Jeremy stated, I don't remember the employee's name, but I'm not so sure that we're allowed to, county vehicles are allowed to plow state highways, which 299 is. So it kind of, and I think there's a couple of employees on here that live in Anderson or Reading that take cars home. So I'd be wondering the cost efficiency of that, since they really can't start working until they get to, I guess it would be the Highway 299 and Old Lewiston exit where the phone booth used to be. And even at that time, I think these two people commuted together, I don't know their names. If that is the case, and say they did have a county vehicle, what is the other person doing at that time when the one person, we'll say driving the truck? Is the other person just hanging out a full day? It seems to be a loss of money for the county. And I would just honestly like to know, does it actually happen? Has it been, has it been noted that these people do this at least once a month or less than once a month? And if so, why are we giving them a car 200 days a year?
Well, to come up with the, the numbers, I mean, I'm sure we could go back and, and spend plenty of time coming up with the numbers. What I balance this out as a decision that I believe, I'm going to take direction of the board, is a public safety issue. We know law enforcement is number one in the, in the community for, for public safety, but DOT is a close second. Law enforcement doesn't do us any good if they can't get down the road. So DOT, to me, is a close second in public safety. During the car fire, during the Monument fire, we had major arteries closed. And if those people were not in a marked vehicle by the county, they would not have gotten through. They could not get through 299 from the car fire, 299 from the Monument fire. They were called out from their homes because they, they were preemptive and put road closure signs in the back of those trucks. So they were supposed to close roads on the backside towards the Willow Creek side of the Monument fire would not have been able to be done if they didn't have a county vehicle. So we're, we're kind of guessing at when the next disaster is going to be. But as we know, we're in disaster season year-round now. The Paradise Fire happened in November. We didn't say, oh, we're not going to need, they're not going to need to do that because it's November. Well, the Paradise Fire happened in November. We had just a major snowstorm just came through. Rains are anticipated in, in April. So as far as the 12 days a year, have they used more than 12 days a year? I hope we needed more than 12 days a year. I would say yes. I don't have those numbers, but again, I, I weigh the balance between public perception and public safety. And I know the perception's out there because they see them driving them home or they're parked in the yards that, oh, they're receiving a special benefit. But the first people who are called when anything happens is usually the road department because we've got to get, got to get the roads clear. So the other part that I, I'd like to remind the board is if we're looking to save dollars, we're looking in the wrong area. Department of Transportation costs, county zero. It's 100% funded by the state. So even if we took these vehicles away and saved that money, we would not recognize a dollar in our general fund. So to me, it's, it's money well, well-received and well-spent. So that's my little pitch.
If, if we could find a way to save some money in some respect by changing this up a bit, would the savings then be able to be utilized on roads that definitely need attention, particularly in the South County?
That's a question for probably David and Lisa. If you could transfer the amount of money, you know, for considering it costs $400,000, two chip steel a mile and a million to, to pay that, I just don't see that much savings from taking six vehicles away from people. Right? So I'm not trying to be smart aleck, but we're like, we're talking millions to do a, to do another mile of road as opposed to eight or $9,000 a year in fuel. It would possibly save.
Okay, so, but fuel, can I speak to that? Is that even a discussion we should have?
Yes, thank you supervisors. David Colvin, Deputy Director, Department of Transportation. There were quite a few questions in there and I thought Director, or sorry, Dr. Coon spoke very well to the, to the issue. So what is this specific question?
If there was a way to change this up a bit, would any savings utilized or recognized be able to then be reallocated to do some road work that we use and currently be able to be done?
I, I would echo what Dr. Coon said, that any savings would be minimal compared to the cost of any particular project that you could imagine repaving, for example. I think that was the example given. So if we're talking something like $10,000 a year for these vehicle expenditures to increase crew efficiency, productivity, and flexibility, I think that that $10,000 is well-spent here and that it would not be reflected in a particular project that you might think of. And part of that answer is as well, is the amount of, number of crew members that we have. That is more the limiting factor than any particular savings from this vehicle cost.
And that, did you say $10,000 a year is kind of what it's costing us?
I'm guessing that because I know how much one costs and they drive the farthest to zone. Kind of add the rest of it. So I'm using 10 as a round number.
And when we look at these dollars and we're, and that's fuel only that we're grabbing in, so if we look at not just insurance, maintenance as well, but what about replacing the cost of the vehicle when it comes back around? Does that also get funded by the DOT dollars?
That is all road funds, yes. In terms of vehicle allocations, that's in the budget that is built out and projected for. I, I do want to highlight something just briefly in terms of the memorandum that you discussed earlier from 2012 that came through, through discussions with the union. When those vehicles are being driven, they are working at the same time. If, if they see any particular problems, knocking rocks is the term. They're knocking rocks off the road, which doesn't seem like a big thing, but if it's a road hazard, then they're addressing those as they're using these vehicles to commute home. Another comment to make is that these employees are not paid. They are commuting home. They're just doing it in a vehicle, a county vehicle. So there's, there's a lot of nuance in there in terms of these vehicles being used to the right purpose, not only in the case of emergency, but as the employee is making themselves available.
So thank you for that because there is a lot of nuance that I think I don't understand. Language about starting days from your house and ending your workday 30 minutes early, that kind of thing. Is it just like, that's a little bit hard to understand when I read it?
Sure. This detail in there, and I, I'm not sure that whether we should dig deep into that because the overall question then becomes, do we stick with this type of memorandum or letter to the board? I forget how council phrased it. Or change the ordinance itself? So there, it is part of the policy, yes, in terms of being able to leave early in order to bring the vehicle home. What again, I want to reiterate or re-stress, as Dr. Coon had mentioned, particularly in terms of fires, we have crews that would get out home at four in the morning and have to turn around and go back out again the next day to close roads or otherwise deal with trees to, to be responsive in an emergency situation. And this particular agenda item in front of you is what gives us, or gives the Director of the DOT Department to, to have that flexibility to make those decisions, to allow those types of activities to occur, to provide public safety and to try to, you know, protect a traveling public. Where it is currently written in, what is it, 12, 12.6.800, where we get just 12 days of a year, already approved, maybe four days. And that's just in the past couple of months of me being, one month, we'll delay it, me being on this job. So increasing the availability, the flexibility throughout the year to respond to particular circumstances is what we're looking for with this agenda item.
And do everyone, okay, so first off, when we're listing these by kind of job description, really it's not that, right, Dr. Coon? It's one person, you're just avoiding names?
Yes, we're true. And I'm getting additional information as we're talking. And that 30 minutes was because they used to have to report to the satellite. Now they report to the main yard. So that 30 minutes was because they have to report farther away. That's why the 30 minutes was given in that, in that MOE or memorandum. But yes, even though it, it states, I'm sounding a wrong one because it says we still have a hospital administrator I need to move up. So the ordinance isn't a little outdated. It is one person per listed position that we have on here. It's not everybody in that position. Then that would be the discretion of the.
So we're only talking about the way that the memo is written now, not the way the ordinance is written? Because while the hospital administrator obviously doesn't apply anymore, and this fair advisor, I'm assuming we just have them misspelled because we're not.
The ordinance was.
We had somebody that took tolls.
Eighty-three or something like that, wasn't it? Was the ordinance written?
So when we, when we do what we're, what is before us today, is that all that we're doing? Or is there more that?
That's all. It would be these, the positions listed and the staff that is, that holds that position.
Okay, last question.
And if we still have to, if they even want to expand that, they'd have to, well, they don't become, they'd have to justify to me why additional personnel would be utilized in the vehicle.
Okay, and then not every one of these eight are under DOT? So where do those funds come from?
Okay, let's go back up to that. Those are going to be our general fund ones because we know the probation is primarily general fund. There's some outside funding. We have our facilities manager, our facility, what is it called? So these operations superintendent is 100% general fund. If that's, I don't know if we have, I guess that's it. Yeah, only those two would be affect general fund. Facilities manager, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I can, I can say that that position is called out several times a week because that position maintains our jail, maintains all our county facilities. And we have, every time, every time it snows or rains, the roof leaks in the courthouse. And every time it's hot, the air conditioning unit doesn't come on. So I always joke with that particular, that, well, right now we don't have an air conditioning problem. In four more months, we won't have a leaky roof problem. Because it's vice versa. Somebody's called out quite often. Water main breaks and every single part, cemetery, anything, has to take care of. Any county-owned building that he maintains and is called out. I would easily say, and I can look at Suzie a couple of times a week, Suzie? And I have a chief probation officer who'd be here if she'd like to. If you have a question about the chief.
Do you have any question about the chief probation officer?
I don't even, so I like to say with the, the road department transportation. It says here that in the winter months, the employee workday will begin at place of residence.
That, we're going back to that memorandum, which is actually been something that's been negotiated with the union. So that's not really what we're voting on right now. We're voting on this list of eight. I think we would probably, I'm looking at council now, but if we, we don't get the chain seven random without talking to the union, I would suspect.
That is correct. It would subject to me.
Okay. Do we have any other technical questions before I open this up to public comment?
I would have a question for the chief probation officer. That comes out general fund, correct?
Black portion, yes.
So I don't know where you live, really. I'm sorry.
I'm in Reading.
I just want to be careful because when we're, when we're looking at this, we can't look at the individuals and where they live.
Sure.
You can make, you can make restrictions in terms of how far they can travel with these vehicles, if they can go out of county, but we can't look at the individual location of, of our staff.
So in the past, the chief probation officer did not take a vehicle. And you currently are?
No, I am not currently.
You're not taking a vehicle?
No. And if I may, I provided this information based on that my position was already listed in 2.56030. And perhaps I was naive and I was providing information in wanting to maintain that availability.
And I guess on top of that too is, is within the ordinance, the Director of General Services is assigned a vehicle, 24 hours a day, which is me. And I, and I have passed mine on to the facilities manager. I don't take a vehicle. I use my personal vehicle and everything when I travel. So I've taken my vehicle and assigned it to our general services, our facilities manager.
And this time you're not using a vehicle?
No, I'm not. I wanted to maintain the availability for it because our youth are contracted in counties than New County, Shasta County, even Tacona County. And I, as you know, I've only been in this county for about six months, but in my 20 years of experience in probation, when there could be issues going on with a youth, you sometimes can know in advance. And we previously had a youth that had some medical issues that needed to be transported. So just me being able to have that availability. So just me being able to have that availability for those youth, I just was wanting to leave this open and available.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
With that, I think I will open up item 4.3 to public comment. Do we have any public comment? And on Zoom, I don't see any in the room.
I have no raised hands and no new chats.
All right, wow.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Scene one, motion by supervisor Brown, second by supervisor Groves. Supervisor Groves, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown.
Aye.
Supervisor Cox.
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Chairman Fritcher.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Office of Emergency Services, item 4.4, received an update from Director of Emergency Services, Liz Hamilton, regarding the local emergency declaration slash local health emergency declaration process and current declarations.
Thank you, Chairman. We have a long list of items. I'm hoping to use 4.4 to kind of give an overview of all 10. And then as we go through, take additional questions and discuss as needed. So my goal today is just to provide the, what had been requested for an administrative overview with some incident updates. And the use and the need for continuing local emergencies. And I'm going to try and organize this the best that I can. First, I want to just acknowledge the support of this board and our previous board. As you see, we've had consistent and layered emergencies for several years. Health and Human Services has had Office of Emergency Services since 2017. We made that transition during the Helena fire. And I don't believe we've had reprieve since that time. So we're learning. I continue to learn. Our staff, our executive team continues to learn how to best serve the county. I know that consistently, all five districts are impacted by the emergencies going on. I also want to just appreciate and acknowledge just the work of our county team at large and just how easy and well we have integrated our response overall. And then a special thank you just to my executive team within Health and Human Services and Office of Emergency Services. So Office of Emergency Services overall is charged with providing the necessary planning, coordination and response support of all the agencies affected by large scale emergencies and disasters. It's a cooperative effort with governmental jurisdictions and disciplines such as law enforcement, fire, emergency medical services, state and federal agencies, utilities and private industry to provide coordinated response to disaster. Sometimes from the public, there's a perception that Office of Emergency Services has more direct support to the community. And while we do support the community, it's through supporting the government agencies in securing funding. The OES director has authority to declare a state of emergency or local emergency per government code section 8630 and section 2.40 of the codified ordinances of the county. When the county is affected by public calamity, it's the emergency is subject to ratification by the board within seven days and reviewed every 60 days. The county health officer has the authority to declare a local emergency per Health and Safety Code Division 101, Part 3, Chapter 2, Subsection 101075 and 101080 to protect public health and safety, subject to ratification by the board within seven days and reviewed every 30 days. And all, these are each identified in each of the resolutions submitted to you. The emergency, the definition of emergency is subject to the discretion of the board and how long an emergency response lasts. Of course, it's focused on the county response and it, I really want to highlight and underscore that an emergency is both the initial response, it's also recovery, prevention, mitigation and preparedness. And the purpose for declaring an emergency simply is we have expanded what the county can do and we need additional support from mutual aid. It could be from state and federal resources and funding. These emergency declarations allow us to access disaster service workers. It gives us the ability to procure local, state and federal resources timely. We see that especially in the time when contracts are needed. For example, and I'll talk about this later, but with the state's declaration of emergency for COVID, the state has been able to procure contracts for nursing teams that we then can piggyback and use without going out to bid. So that is one example of how the use of contracts during local emergencies provides resources immediately. So the emergency is complete when the county no longer relies on these outside resources. For funding, I want to break it into kind of picture of two buckets. With, when we have a local emergency, which means we're asking CalOES, California Office of Emergency Services, to recognize a need that we have, request that need of the governor. When that's approved, the funding comes directly from the governor through CalOES to the local jurisdiction. In the case of COVID, we also could use CalOES funding through a local emergency. But with a health emergency, then we're able to receive funding through California Department of Public Health directly, both on a state and federal level. When we are looking at receiving funding from CalOES through California Disaster Assistant Act, CDAA, there is, each time, there's going to be a threshold of damages and incurred costs. Ballpark may be around $100,000. It depends and we can't necessarily marry a particular number. But the thresholds are pretty high for incurred cost of the county, not of private residents or if this is just county costs, it could be staff costs, supplies. If we didn't meet, for example, a $100,000 threshold, it would be the county's cost for that response with staff time. And CDAA, we, when we have a local emergency proclaimed, we assess the cost and then we submit those. Then it is up to CalOES to scrutinize and go through everything that we have submitted, that we're asking for reimbursement for. And they can approve or deny line item requests. And we see that in each incident over and over. They work with us. We have great liaisons and work really well to really understand what it is that the state needs to see and that our response is responsible. When the governor sees that the need of a disaster extends beyond the state's ability to respond, the governor can ask for a presidential response and ask for FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, for, through the Department of Homeland Security for assistance. In the last two years, we have secured FEMA declarations, two FEMA declarations, which is, has not been common in Trinity County. It just speaks to the degree of devastation that we've all experienced here. And then for funding on the COVID side, like I said, we have not actually claimed for any CDAA funding for COVID through our local emergency. But through our health emergency, we have been able to then receive state and federal funds through California Department of Healthcare Services, Public Health. So currently we have 10 declarations before you. One is new for the winter storms that we just experienced. We have, of those 10, there are seven local emergencies. So that is tied to everything with CalOES and then we have three health emergencies that kind of partner with some of these. So I know in the list, in the board agenda, they're not lumped together. So I'm going to go through and kind of lump them together, talking about the 2020 fires and recovery first. And then our 2021 fires and recovery. And then we'll go through for drought and then the winter storm and then COVID. It's kind of how I'm going to organize it. For our 2020 fires, we have primarily is the August complex. We did have the Red Salmon complex during that time, but we did not submit for any losses. And that's so focus will be on the August complex. We did receive and were awarded both CDAA and FEMA. In order to continue the cleanup and recovery, which is a part of the emergency, we need to keep those emergency declarations in place. The health emergency that partners and goes along with the local emergency for August complex is what allows state response to actually enter on physical properties and remove debris. If we were to lose that health emergency, then all the recovery efforts would have to cease. That would no longer give them permission to remove waste. And it also would hinder environmental, any environmental response if there was damage and further consequence of being on a property. So while the local emergency allows us access to the funds for fires, it's the health emergency that allows us to physically enter. Specific details on the August complex, I just want to recognize Deputy Director Mike Cottone and his work for the last year plus, year and a half in working specifically recovery. There's a lot that is still going on since August of 2020. We have 172 of 209 properties that have been returned to the county. The tree removal has been completed on 98 of 133 properties. We have approximately 70% of private property hazard trees that have been intended to. And about 46% of right of way hazard trees that have been felled intended to. We are still waiting an appeal. We appealed with FEMA asking for inclusion to include the Ruth Rodeo Grounds and Ruth Community Church. So we're waiting to hear back if those properties will then be included in cleanup. And again, if you have specific questions about August complex and any recovery, I'm happy to address those on those items.
We used the term return to the county. What exactly does that mean?
So after, in phase two cleanup, after the properties have been cleared and scraped, they go through a process of having to do soil sampling and make sure that all the debris is completely gone. And those are returned to the county then to turn around and return to the property owners. So it gives environmental health an opportunity to go and do a final review of those properties before return. For the 2021 fires, again, like August complex, we have active funding from CDAA and FEMA. And again, because of that, I would ask that the local emergencies for those continue to be approved as well as the health emergencies that allow us entry for the 2021 fires, specifically Monument and River Complex. So we are, you know, newly into recovery and cleanup efforts. We have received 69 write-up entry forms from property owners. And this is amazing and a testament to the work of recovery team and Kristi Henderson with Environmental Health, working with property owners. We only have two write-up entry forms not completed yet. So this is significant that we have this many. We have 47 site assessments complete. And of these 69, I mean, if you would like, I can split that out. 38 of them are with Monument Fire and 31 are from River Complex. 47 site assessments are complete. It's 24 on Monument, 23 on River. We also are going through several assessments. The teams are for asbestos, biological assessments, cultural assessments and abatements. We have, on the Monument Fire, we do have 10 debris removals complete, although in soil sampling phase. We have 47 eligible properties for hazard tree removal. And of course, hazard tree assessments continue. As far as FEMA applications, we have 80 households and these aren't broken down by incident. We do have 80 households that are registered with FEMA, resulting in 62 additional referrals. And so FEMA will take those and make appropriate referrals. So they've referred 50 households to home loan, wealth business referrals. We have approximately just over 900, or I'm sorry, 292,000 approved in individual and household program. So that's 15 households that are approved for assistance. So this is money coming into survivors' households. We have 202,000 approved in housing assistance, 14 households, 22,000 in rental assistance for 14 households. And just over 90,000 approved for other needs in other programs in 11 households. You see that our residents are benefiting from FEMA assistance. Moving on to discuss the emergency declaration for, wait, let me go back. Earlier, Mr. Colbank gave a kind of overview on flash flooding and everything that's happened upon Coffee Creek that is kind of lumped into our 2021 resolutions. It's also just the impacts of what the debris and then winter weather has done up there. So I know when that item is pulled, if there's additional questions, I know that Mr. Colbank has stayed and is happy to answer additional questions. Moving on to the drought resolution, and I was speaking with our CalOES liaison yesterday. The state will continue to keep the drought resolution in place long-term. There was a, there was an understanding that drought concerns would last multiple years. For our resolution locally, there's not a strong recommendation to keep it. It could expire. The fact that the state will continue to keep theirs, we could bring it back. We have not submitted any request to CDAA for incurred cost over drought. So I know that there's probably commentary and maybe more questions about that item when it comes up specifically. I know that Mr. Colbank has commentary on that. I do not have an opinion whether that one expires or not because I know that we have a window to bring it back after this winter and reevaluate our drought conditions in Trinity County. And in the recent storm damage, we know that there's been discussion about that already today. We are asking that the board ratify that new declaration today. It's precautionary. We are assessing what the county cost of that storm is and if there's need beyond what county resource. what county resources have. So more discussion to come on that. It's very new, and we don't have an exact picture of what the cost could be with that. Moving on to COVID declarations, we do have both a local emergency and a health emergency. As I stated earlier, the purpose of a local emergency would be to access funds through CalOES, and we have not submitted any claims through CDAA. That would, and I don't anticipate that we would. Through our health declaration, we're able to continue receiving funds through the state and federal resources through CDPH, and we would want to keep that intact. The local emergency, earlier in consent calendar today, we approved the, it was item 2.2, adopting a resolution regarding teleconference, and that is tied to us maintaining a local emergency for COVID. I would just note that for the board's discussion.
The normal COVID or the current COVID health?
The local. The local. Regarding COVID, we are still actively under a global emergency, in that the World Health Organization still continues to keep their declaration. We have a federal declaration, and of course, a state declaration. And recently, it was actually November 10th, our California Governor, through executive order in dash 21 dash 21, extended the current state of emergency regarding COVID through March 31st of 2022. I do not know what the intent would be beyond the end of March, but I know that that is the current extension. Initially, if you recall, when COVID funding started coming down from the state, the state did actually require that we have a local attestation in place in order to receive funding. In our first two of our, currently, I believe we're at 11 COVID grants in public health or allocations, the first two were tied to that attestation being in place and being approved by the board. That practice has since kind of retired. And because the money is flowing through CDPH and is allocated, you know, there is, the advocacy is to keep the local health emergency in place to keep those funding streams open, but it is not necessarily required. And I say that lightly, it's the truth, but I say that with caution, that I wouldn't want to unintentionally remove ourselves from funding should the state ever change that, which we've seen them do at least initially. Overall, our COVID response, we can go back to looking at how we define an emergency. We're looking at not only just the initial response, we're also looking at mitigation and prevention. And we are still in that emergency of needing outside help. Going back to the purpose of these declarations is to allow outside resources to come into the county and support. And our public health team has been working diligently for the past nearly two years in COVID response, and it's exhausting. And the support and continuation of outside resources coming in to help with mitigation and disease control, I advocate for that help. We need that continued help. Even if our case rates aren't high, there's still the need for resources such as vaccine and testing, which we see that's an increased, and I imagine, an ongoing request of the state for counties to provide for vaccine and testing for population groups. And so I want to go through and kind of talk about, probably the most concerning need that exists is hospital surge right now, whether directly related to COVID or indirectly related to COVID. Our hospitals, we rely on this system, and I really want to help the board and the public understand that when we look at our hospital capacities, we look at our North State region that we're a part of, and we're integrated, and it's not just a part of what our local hospital can or can't do, it's what basically anything north of Sacramento can help in response to. And we are in a state of surge. The hospital care that is being provided for is under surge orders, which reduces level of care to maximize how many people can be cared for at one time. And it is a system. So California continues to surge, like I said, for both COVID and non-COVID. Our local MOOC continues in an active status 24/7, and this supports our local hospital with healthcare needs. For example, helping with transfers. If a patient presents at our local hospital and they cannot find a bed available in the North State, our public health team is called to help them go through the process of finding available beds. And this has been chronic and routine since August, that our public health team has called in to support our hospital in finding available beds.
And this is for COVID or all?
For COVID and non-COVID, just the support in finding available staffed beds in the North State.
And our hospital still doesn't take COVID patients?
Correct. As for cases, in a case update, our dashboard, our trinitycountyboard website is maintained. We've committed to that for the last year and a half, two years, keeping that updated. I know that it changed, Marcy did a presentation on those changes. You know, statewide, the case rate in the positive, or we say the test positivity rate is at 11.2%. Here in Trinity County, it's at, our case rate is at 1.1. It's reflective of our lack of testing as well, and there's different factors to consider. I think that, you know, it could be assessed in a few different ways. But we do have one of the lowest testing rates in California, while testing is actually increasing. So we do have testing through our public health team and our SNAP nurses. So let me talk about SNAP nurse team. That is our state contracted team that comes here five days a week, Tuesday through Saturday, eight hours per day, and they are traveling teams, so they're often found in Weaverville, Hayfork, Lewiston. And then our mobile team through our public health team, they are weekly traveling to Antigen and over-the-counter test kits are supplied to all the medical providers by CDPH to schools, to both medical providers and schools. We have received a shipment, or expect to receive a shipment this week of just over 1,700 over-the-counter tests that will be dispersed. Again, this is in part to having these emergencies in place that allow us to receive these materials and resources. We're also going to distribute to other community locations, such as markets, food banks, face-to-face kitchens, to our IHSS providers, senior centers, and first responders to be able to distribute tests, so that the population has multiple ways of accessing Our SNAP nurses also provide vaccination access, and this is in both first, second doses and booster doses. And again, five days a week, Tuesday through Saturday, and they are rotating through Lewiston, Hayfork, and Weaverville. Our mobile, our public health mobile unit team, they go to, once a week, they're going to often travel to Burnt Ranch, Wildwood, Ketten Pond, Ruth, Mad River, seeing at Douglas City, Junction City, remote areas of Hayfork, Nassau, North Trinity Center, and then Sal Yer and Big Bar. We try and use our staff to go into more of the, to the smaller communities. From July to December, we have done a total of 140 days of testing and vaccination to the mentioned communities. So we have approximately 49% of our eligible residents are fully vaccinated in Trinity Approximately 2,300 folks have received a booster, another 2,300 that are eligible for a booster, and then 1,500 that are not yet eligible for a booster. 43% of eligible residents are unvaccinated. 8% of eligible residents are partially vaccinated. 3.2% of children 5 to 11 years of age are fully vaccinated, which is approximately 26 children in the 5 to 11. And then 6.5% of children 5 to 11 are partially vaccinated. That's 53 children.
I'm sorry, I missed the 11 and above, or 11 to 18, or did you have that?
That is included in, but that's not.
It's not broken out?
It's not broken out. That would be probably included in the 49% of eligible. It's imperative that we just continue to advocate for public health principles and interventions, and ensure that hospital care is available, and that vaccination, boosters, and testings remain available to our public. Vaccines and boosters are important. The monoclonal antibody treatments and oral antiviral pills are allocated to local health jurisdictions based on equity measures, which include test positivity rate, case counts, hospitalization, and death rate, and number of residents living in the California Health Index Place Index quartiles 1 and 2. All of these indicators put Trinity low on the list for receiving a larger share of COVID-19 monoclonal antibody treatments and antivirals statewide. Trinity County has the second lowest testing rate in California. We don't have an actual picture of potential infection in our county. Many of our HPI quartiles 1 and 2 are located and outlined in less populated areas. In the strain on of the healthcare delivery system, volunteer fire medical EMS, Trinity Hospital, and our regional hospitals, which continue to face staffing challenges, could severely impact our availability and wait time for higher level of care for all traumas, not just related to COVID. Again, coming back to supporting our public health's mission in being able to provide resources to the community. I understand that not all of the members of our community want vaccine or testing, but I think for the members of our community that do, keeping this available is the responsible thing for us to continue to do. It's my recommendation that we continue and approve these items with further debate on the resolution regarding drought. We continue to heavily rely on the resources outside the county in all of our active emergencies. In part, it's, we have so many layered emergencies that our bandwidth in responses at county is just diminished because we have multiple emergencies going on at one time. I would also recommend, you know, in a later conversation, prior to our budget creation, is to look at, you know, creating an emergency fund for the cost of local emergencies that we have available. But for the purposes of each of our items on today, I'd recommend that the board continue approving these items.
You had said one thing that got my attention there is that, you know, the antibodies, the, oh, I forget what they're called. Monoclonal antibodies. So since we have low rates and that we're not a diverse community, if you're sitting in Redding, because you can't be sitting here, if you're sitting in Redding Hospital, the person next to you in bed might get them and you can't? Is that how this works, or is it done on a regional basis? Or do you know?
I do not know how to answer that question directly. I could ask Marcy, who is on Zoom, if you would like her to answer that question if she hasn't answered.
If she just sent me a note, that's fine.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
I'm happy to answer.
Thank you.
Hi, Marcy.
Hi. So just as Liz was stating, Supervisor Croz, the, our allocation is based on our testing rate and our positivity rate. And so because we're not, people aren't getting tested, although it's broadly available to them in Trinity County, and we want to keep that through our public health emergency declaration, that support, but because people aren't getting tested as often, and because the over-the-counter test doesn't require them to report it, that can affect how much of the monoclonal antibodies and the antivirals we get to prevent people from going to the hospital. So it isn't like people will be in the hospital, this person's from Trinity, they don't get the monoclonal antibodies. It doesn't work that way. It's simply the allocation coming to us, and our medical providers and our hospital are actually able to give and have been giving monoclonal antibodies. And then when we get, and the antivirals we're going to give, we want CBS to distribute those. So that's just to clarify, it's based on the testing numbers that we get those resources. That's why we want to advocate to continue our public health emergency, to ensure we have access to those free testing resources from the state, and then message our communities to get tested.
Thank you, Marcy. Any other questions? No.
Are you done, Liz?
I am. I know that we have 10 items that follow up each one of these.
So tomorrow, the mobile unit will be Douglas City. It will be vaccinating, boosting, and giving away test kits, correct?
Correct.
Is there a number of test kits you can get per person? Can I pick up some for people who are homebound, can I ask at the store, people who missed the date?
We are wanting to make tests widely available, so if there's a need, we can facilitate that.
All right. Talk to them on up there.
So could I then have clarity maybe from Marcy? Because Marcy, last night at the Fire Chiefs Association meeting, it seemed like, it seemed like your comments to a question from Chief Corbett were more toward limiting the number, or I guess being really definitive in why people were being tested of those that are given to the fire department, but would that not be another means, as Supervisor Croz was just asking, of getting tests out to more people? Could you explain the difference?
So Supervisor Cox, can you please clarify? I'm not sure exactly what state, are you talking about my testing, the testing kits that are over the counter that the fire department is requesting? Is that what you're asking about?
It may or may not be what I'm asking, and you can clarify that for me, because I may have misunderstood you last night. But there are tests that are made available to the firefighters, and I think that you were, I think that you were asking them to clarify what is your use for these, and when their answer was, what you were like, yeah, that's what I need to hear from you. Maybe you could just revisit that without me putting wrong words in your mouth.
So the over-the-counter test that we're getting, we're getting 1,000 of those, and those have been allocated from CDPH to schools first, to test children, for to have the availability to test children when they're coming back from vacation, or as the school sees fit. Again, these are the over-the-counter tests that people do to themselves, all right? So we're getting 1,000 of those, and we have an equity plan, and we are required by CDPH to ensure equitable access to testing and vaccine. by CDPH to ensure equitable access to testing and vaccination in our county for all persons who want it, no matter how remote those communities are. So of those thousand tests, Liz laid out where they're gonna be distributed, and the goal of those tests is for people to be able to test themselves at home, should they be concerned they've been exposed, or if they have symptoms, or if they're traveling, Supervisor Cox, which we know how that can be, if you're traveling, you wanna be able to test to qualify for that travel, but the priority for those tests is to both, as it is with any, any testing in this pandemic, is to mitigate and contain and to preserve life. So my response to the fire personnel was, because we've had questions from fire personnel about testing people before they go into their meetings, to make sure that no one's positive, and my response to that is, that's not what you're using these tests for, is to test to go into meetings, same reason we wouldn't want people to test to go into a board supervisor's meeting or any other meeting. It would be, under the masking guidance that we have right now, it would be you mask if you qualify for that. So the goal of these over-the-counter tests is to identify persons who are positive, so persons in the home that may not have broad access or be able to go to the store and purchase these, or for schools, is so that they'll know if they have it, and they know that they need to isolate or quarantine.
Perfect, thank you for closing that gap for me.
Okay, I have a question, I think this will be for counsel. Since item 4.4, kind of ran into items 4.0, the rest of, all the way to 14, do I need to open public comment for 4.4, or can we just jump into item 4.5 and start opening public comment on each one separately?
You need to open for each one, so you need to do 4.4 as well.
Okay, so with that, I guess we'll open public comment on item 4.4, and then we will also have to open public comment on all the others.
I think it was I who brought up the question of whether there was an emergency, and I also said, yeah, we vote for the emergency because we have to get the funding. I was only talking about the COVID, I didn't care, I wasn't raising this for service stuff. They're not taking away people's constitutional rights, they're not letting people have in their houses for three months, shutting down their businesses, making them wear masks. I mean, come on. What is the funding? What are we talking about? You say there's an emergency, there was, no, that one case in Trinity County when the emergency was first declared. You got a thing called Omicron now that's like a cold. How long is the emergency gonna go on? I noticed, and thank you for that resolution, but unfortunately, it doesn't protect the people, it's a nice sentiment, but I think the next day, you guys passed it, the governor said, okay, gotta put the masks on again. I mean, it's the declaration of the emergency that's creating the tyranny, and it's based on a lie. Every, there's a speculation on my part, but I believe that most people that are gonna be vaccinated already have been vaccinated. The evidence and the facts that are coming out about the vaccinations are not entirely positive, who'd want to get it? You don't get it, you don't get any immunity, and you can't transmit it. Why does public health even have an interest in it? It should just be a personal decision. How much money are we talking about? I thought you was gonna bring in a report to tell us. What is the funding? Where does it go? Who gets it? I mean, I heard some business owners got some money and it's all a lie, can we have that? Is that public? Can we have that information? And then, you know, how much money are we talking about? Maybe the people of Trinity County, it should be presented to the people and let them decide. If you don't want to decide, but there is no emergency. I mean, your own definition in your manual, there's no crisis. This is really sad. Where is the, how can I get the information? How can the board get the information? The specific dollars? What are we talking about? What services are provided? Who wants them? Maybe people would rather be free and not be under the gun of having their children get vaccinated to stay in school. Why don't you just end the emergency? There's no emergency. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment from the room? Seeing none. I have no raised hands on Zoom and no new chats.
Okay, do we need to, we don't need to take any action on item 4.4? All right, so we will move on to item 4.5, which is to adopt a resolution which confirms the continuance of a local emergency in the county of Trinity due to drought conditions. And Liz already spoke to this, um, anyone have any-
Yeah, I have some questions. So have we, has there been any money or grants or anything pulled out for drought conditions? I know our businesses can't get money, it doesn't make the lake any fuller, what benefit is it to, you already spoke that this is one that, you know, we could, you don't care one way or the other, I guess is the main way of thinking.
It was, the county hasn't incurred any costs due to drought. Funding that's available to the public, I am, I am not aware of what has been available to the public and private business. That wouldn't require us to have a local emergency for them to do that, because the state, my understanding, what I was, what was communicated is that the state still has their declaration in place, which could make funding available to private business. For the county, you know, we were initially looking at reservoirs, and that is, those conversations would go through the state water board first, before they came down to local jurisdictions, and so, you know, my opinion on this is minimal, because I know that we haven't incurred any costs, and because I know that we can come back and ask for a new resolution if needed. But I know that David Kolbeck had some commentary on this item as well, we'll get to that.
Thank you, David Kolbeck, and at this point, I'll be speaking as the temporary cannabis manager, both in one regard, and that is, I have done enough research on this, honestly, but I just want the board to consider the notion of continuing this emergency for consideration for local businesses related to cannabis. I think Mr. Keys had pointed this out in the public comment period, drought affecting cannabis industry, and so I think it's one for you to at least consider. I know that there's a number of other grant opportunities through the state water board related to individual residences, I don't know that this local declaration would specifically impact the ability to apply for those funds, given the state declaration is continuing, but 50/50. My notion is just, eh, consider proceeding with it. I'm not sure what the thresholds would need, that we face if we ever wish to declare later in the spring, perhaps, depending on how this winter shapes up, this water season shapes up, we could, we could piggyback again on a state declaration, but I'm not sure what thresholds we would have to consider at the point of declaring a local emergency. So not much information for you, I wish I hadn't worked, but I'm thinking, I'm leaning toward continuing this declaration.
Do you have any technical questions for your public comment?
I do. Margaret, where does the threshold lie where it is incumbent upon the board to end an emergency declaration as soon as is practical? I don't picture that we're anywhere near that threshold, but how do you, how do you determine that? There is no legal definition to determine that, it is up to the discretion of the board. So if you have any justifiable reason to continue it, and it can be anything that Director Hamilton discussed about, funding, need, continuing emergency concerns that it could exacerbate or, you know, reinvigorate if something else were to happen, all of those would be legitimate, but it is put in your discretion.
Then I'll open public comment on item 4.5.
I have no raised hands and no new chats on Zoom. Is there any comment from the room? Seeing none, I'll turn it back to you.
I will move to, for 4.5, to accept as presented, but unless I get more compelling information in the future, this will be my last. So that was a motion and a statement.
I agree with the sentiment, so I'll second.
Going to motion and second, any further discussion?
Is that statement just a personal statement, David?
Yes, that was, I combined my statement period with my motion period.
So you're drafting 4.5 as stated?
Yep.
I do have, I have a little bit of an issue with this one after driving here today, the declaring drought, when you have to drive through standing water on the county road for miles at times, so I would be willing to go along with that, but I do think that we really need to take a look at some of these in the future, because it's like, I kind of feel like there comes a time when you, it's hard to declare emergencies for drought and flooding on the same page. We have to decide if we have, which one's the emergency, because I feel like we're not really working with emergencies here, we're trying to squeeze funding out of the state, which, there's gotta be a better way to get money from the state than to pander to these kind of things.
So my question there, and maybe David can answer this for me, is the difference between surface water and groundwater? And when we've been under drought conditions for a number of years, the snow and the water that we have to get through doesn't necessarily replenish what's been eaten and serving people, is that correct?
Yes, I would agree with that statement exactly. Our groundwater tables are in serious decline over the past several years, I don't believe that this winter's, should this winter actually turn out to be very productive, still may not really bring us back to the level that we'd wish to be at, so that you could still see drought, the drought conditions continue through next year. To be honest, again, I have not looked at the data in terms of any potential modeling coming up, in terms of the effects of this wet season, but I can imagine and suspect that even if we were wet in the spring, we could still get dry conditions, we would still be in a drought scenario, and we would still be in fire danger with very limited water availability. So I do not believe that this one winter will get us out of a drought emergency, even though it's difficult to see, and I admit that, standing water on the county road, I was actually more appalled by that statement than anything right there, but I, again, for a number of reasons, feel that we should, including our local water districts, water availability, Department of Transportation availability to give water for any road maintenance, it goes across the board in terms of the impacts to the county government and our population, so I am inclined to continue the declaration as I stated earlier.
Pull you up motion and second, do we have any competing motions or subsequent?
Seeing none, I'm going to pull forward. Motion by Supervisor Groves, second by Supervisor Cox. Supervisor Cox, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Goken?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Frazier?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, item 4.6, adopt a resolution which confirms the continuance of a local emergency in the county of Trinity due to flash flooding in the great flow following October 19 through 21, 2021 rains. That is a difficult sentence.
And this item is specific to Happy Creek Road and the flash flooding that is occurring up there, and so if there are specific technical questions, I know that David is available to take those.
Anyone have any questions? All right, with that, we'll open the public comment on item 4.6.
Seeing no movement from the room, I have no raised hands and no new chats. Turn it back to you.
All right, I would entertain motion.
I'll need to take Scott 4.6 as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Seeing none. Motion by Supervisor Groves, and that motion was to adopt this, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, I wasn't sure if I heard stop, so. Motion by Supervisor Groves, second by Supervisor Goken. Supervisor Goken, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Frazier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 4.7, adopt a resolution which confirms the continuance of a local emergency in the county of Trinity due to the novel coronavirus known as COVID-19. Do you want to speak to this again before, or just answer questions from the board?
No new commentary, can I have any questions?
Anybody have any new questions?
This isn't a new question, Liz, but I wonder if you might just perhaps put some minds at ease by speaking to the difference between making available resources, what would be then available, resources available for people who wish for them, and that if we continue to move this forward, then there becomes a perception that our decision is actually perpetuating the situation itself, and that might be where a little bit of rug is coming from, that's my perception of where some rug might be coming from, and I don't know if that's something that you feel like you can speak to, to maybe align, or maybe make people feel a bit more comfortable. I feel like understanding really helps, so if there's anything that comes to mind when I kind of bring that up, you might want to speak to that a bit.
Not quite sure how I want to answer that, because, you know, I know that there's a lot of opinions about COVID and government, you know, perceptions of government overreach or perpetuating, and, you know, how does this go about? My concern, frankly, is pretty simple, too, how do I support my public health team? How do I bring resources available to the community at the cost of the state and not our local jurisdiction? And, you know, even if we were to end any of our local emergencies, we're still under state emergencies, and we still have to follow the guidance, if you will, of the state, and so ending it doesn't then remove our mandates, and so while I understand that, you know, there's, not everyone is excited about these continuing, you know, I do believe that our population is split, I think that it is 50/50, and I think that, you know, we have to look at both, both needs, and our job as county government is to provide resources to the public for their choosing, and I want to be able to support that and put us in a position to support providing resources during a pandemic, and I'm not sure if that fully answered your question.
No, I appreciate it, what you had to say.
Any other questions?
So, again, between, you know, we have the two COVID, my understanding, correct or wrong, as you told us earlier, that if we didn't accept this, we could no longer do the Brown, have changes in the Brown Act.
Correct.
Which would cut a lot of people out from maintaining, you know, Zooming this program. Kind of reality show, I guess. But in the monies that came to local businesses, that seems to have, you know, stopped, that that was doled out, and now that's over with. So what other monies in the, in the local emergency are, you know, what part of your agency, or what part of, you know, who else is getting those monies, and do you have any idea how much that is?
So for funding, the local emergency, we would be able to submit a claim to CDAA for reimbursement if we need, we haven't done that. In the past, with the local emergency, we were able to receive the CARES funding that came to the county, and the board reviewed that, had that open a public comment, but how that was dispersed and what businesses received those funds, that's, that action has already been taken. That's the action has already been taken. And so there would not be anything as far as funding in that way that I'm aware of right now. Now with the local health emergency, that is what?
Stay on the local one.
Okay, so we're separate. So as far as the local emergency, aside from being able to, you know, maneuver through contracts with state, that would continue this would provide for that. Continues for the Brown Act changes, but not necessarily need funding at this point.
Okay, so the contracts, explain that part to me.
So our contracts with our ability to utilize the state's contracts. So SNAP nurses.
So that doesn't go through health, that goes through the local?
It's all they're the same. They're it's by having both. They're kind of partnered together.
You attach out both to keep the SNAP?
Correct.
And make this easy, did they?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for counsel again. With the Brown Act portion of this, that's only for the board, correct? Where if we if we have, if that item 2.2 was to go away, the board has to meet in person, we have to, but we can still allow a public comment and step over to them? Because the public is not, they're not under the Brown Act.
Correct. And that's not exactly a clear answer because I don't think when they were creating the Brown Act, they contemplated something like this. And there are some jurisdictions that view that without that resolution, the board can listen via the Zoom or whatever mechanism they have, but they can't actually comment because of the no Zoom requirements. I'm anticipating we'll get clarity on that going forward, but at this time, I can't say with 100% confidence the state wouldn't view that as requirement to having the public participate via Zoom.
That seems like the exact opposite of what the intention of the Brown Act would be to. But anyway, I was just curious about that.
But also to clarify, it's not just this meeting that falls under the Brown Act. We just went through a list of meetings that we go to and several of those qualify under the Brown Act.
Correct. The declaration that was made by the county covers all these other organizations and any other special districts within county. So there might be other jurisdictions that are relying on your declaration to use the 361 exemption under the Brown Act. So that's correct.
All right. With that, I will, unless there's any other questions, I'll open item 4.7 up to public comment.
Is there any public comment from the room?
Because frequently it's cited that it's 50/50. I don't know what 50/50 is. What the people that got vaccinated, it's 50/50. I think it's more 60/40, right? But just because you got vaccinated doesn't mean you're in favor of mandates. I mean, maybe you made a judgment that, hey, I'm an old guy and I got a weak heart or bad lungs and the shot might help me. That'd be rational decision. So just you can't say it's 50/50. My discussions with people, a lot of people that got vaccinated, they don't want to see mandates. They don't want their children under a mandate. There's no scientific evidence for it. There's no scientific evidence for the cloth mask. And there's certainly no evidence for locking people down who are healthy. In the history of the world, when you quarantine people, you quarantine the vulnerable. So at any rate, I would ask, or I'm going to ask anyway if I don't get it. I want the information. I want to know the numbers. I want to know the funding. I want to know what businesses, how much money each business got. I mean transparency, isn't that the watchword in the county? Transparency, where are we? I can't believe you came in and did all the stuff when all I asked about was this one thing. And I wanted the numbers. That's what I thought we were going to get. I don't even know how you can decide this without the numbers because you're supposed to be representing me and the people like me that live here. Not to get funding so people can get locked up. I mean, the masks are bad, right? What's next? As long as that emergency is in effect, the people in this county are under threat.
Jack, I will say that if you contact Suzie in the administration, she'll walk you through the process to get that public information.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Daryl Fordville, we're well. Well, to the Brown Act, and I know you guys have been able to attend the meetings, but we had a hospital board meeting last, last Monday, not yesterday, but the last Monday in December. And none of the board members could really have gotten to the meeting because of not health issues, but because the roads weren't available and stuff. So we actually had developed, had a Zoom meeting because of the fact that you guys are back with this Brown Act and they continue to do it. So there are other entities around the county that benefit from the Brown Act changes that are in place right now because of that. And the only other comment I'd make is that what I've been hearing all along here is what you guys are doing doesn't have anything to do with mandates. Those are all coming from the state level and everything else. So to me, we're talking, it's the same thing. The argument was about the mandate should be in Sacramento, not here. Thank you.
Is there any other comments from the room?
Judy Nordlund, I'm from Leaverville. I'm also a ER nurse here in the county. I have a question for Liz. The money that you're getting for COVID, is that reimbursing the hospital for our monoclonal antibodies, for our COVID testing that we're doing at the hospital and at the clinic? Is it, is the hospital being reimbursed?
Judy, I'll step in here. You should ask us the question and then it's up to us to ask it. Liz wants to answer it.
Oh, okay. I don't know the process.
No, no problem. So.
I guess I'm just confused as to where the public health money is going. I know it's going, they're getting nursing support from the state. My question is, do we still need additional nursing support in the county? I think, you know, the big influx of people wanting vaccines, I think the people that wanted the vaccine in that initial push, I think it's over. I think you have people that want boosters. So do we have to have an emergency to provide for the COVID? I'm going to call them shots because I don't think they're vaccines. The COVID shots. Do we need to have an emergency so that? I guess I just don't know how much money is filtering down out of public health to the hospital and the clinic.
Okay, so your question is the antibodies, the hospital getting reimbursed?
Yeah. And will that go away if the emergency declaration goes away?
Okay.
Liz, would you care to answer that question? Or do you know the answer to that question?
I would first to Marcy to answer that question.
Is Marcy still on?
Yes.
Okay. And?
Yes. So I think I'll cover this question and thank you for that. I'm also an ex ER nurse, so. So I'm going to give you just an example of what those funds are. I'm happy to give you, I have all the information. I can provide you the funding sources, the amounts, the return on that investment. I can tell you a little synopsis about what we've done with some of those dollars. Because of the COVID funding coming in, we did not at the time of this initial pandemic. And make no mistake, an emergency is anything that exceeds our ability to respond. Part of the problem right now, and I know we're equating this public health emergency with vaccines, but let me just say this. And I don't know if you recall, but back when infants started to die of whooping cough again, we had T-DAT vaccine. But children who were under six months of age weren't quite fully vaccinated until they became eight months, 18 months, excuse me. We started to see infants die of pertussis that's unheard of. So the state developed T-DAT vaccine as a booster. And because the infants couldn't get it, they called it cocooning. So they required that it became a school required vaccine for seventh grade entry. There was no public health emergency, but the legislature mandated T-DAT vaccine as a school entry vaccine. I just want to say that because I want to diverge the two. I want to diverge the vaccine access and funding going on in our county to make sure that people who want it get it or have access to it versus a public health emergency. So with that said, what we've done with some of these dollars, we've actually worked on a regular basis for the last two years to consistently advocate for us to be able to provide the hospital with funding. The most recent example was during the surge, and this is part of the emergency that we're in right now, is hospitals are impacted to such a point that people that have other things that are COVID, their care is delayed. Okay? We're approaching, and some hospitals have already had to implement this, a crisis standard of care. When you have ERs that are housing 17 people in their ER that need a hospital bed and two in the ambulance bay, and those are hospitals that we're using to transfer our patients from that are higher level of care, something as simple as an appendectomy, things that no one should ever have complications from, that now are having complications because of the delaying care in getting people transferred. That is part of the biggest part of why we need to continue an emergency because we pull a lot of resources in for that. So I'm happy to go into more detail, just not here. So the most recent way that we asked to fund the hospital through some of these dollars was to pay for nurses so that they could staff all of their vets in the hospital. But I'm not going to speak out of turn. I'm just going to say that did not happen, but we were willing to do that. We're also able to offset, we're also able to provide some of our health realignment funding to environmental health to the sheriff because we're able to save those dollars due to the COVID funding, we thought. And so when this pandemic started, public health did not have sufficient infrastructure to deal with this, nor did some aspects of the county. So because of that funding, we were able to build that infrastructure, not just to help us right now, but to help us in the future with any kind of communicable diseases. May they be waterborne, foodborne, respiratoryborne. So that's just a snapshot. And I love these questions. I love our community asking this because it's very passionate about this. And I love to share that information with you because the response that's gone on has been phenomenal in our public health system and our team and with all of your help and supervisors. I'm so grateful. So I will put together something that actually provides you the funds, the money, where they've gone, what we're continuing to fund. And just another note, the SNAP nurse team is funded through, we worked, we thought we had to fund it through our COVID grant, but now thankfully, those funds are coming from FEMA to the state and the state is paying for our SNAP nurse until March. So my hope is that we can get through the winter months, get to March, and then look at, you know, getting rid of the public health emergency because we are still in an emergency. We are in an emergency. Has nothing to do with vaccine mandates.
I guess my time is up?
Yes.
Did that answer your question?
No, it didn't. Because the hospital, we are not overwhelmed.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Is there any other comments from the room? Seeing none, I have no raised hands and no new chats. Back to you.
Okay. That will bring item 4.7 to the board. I will pass 4.7 as stated. Excuse me, I'll make the motions pass 4.7 as stated. Was that a second?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have any further discussion?
Not further discussion, but just a comment. Because the people in my district are pretty polarized on this topic. And I feel like Liz's explanation today was really helpful and I thank you for that. That was hours and hours of gathering and preparation. And I always appreciate the way you present, Liz. You are exceptional, in my opinion. I think what helps me is kind of defining what that emergency means. It is ending this would not remove mandates any more than continuing it perpetuates mandates. Those are two very different topics, but they are, they're difficult. And I've done a ton of thinking about this from the hours that I spent with people in getting ready to write that resolution. And there were people in the room that had been vaccinated that were adamantly opposed to the mandates and wanted that resolution to be stated far more strongly than where we landed. And so I guess I just would want my district to understand. I'm happy to have continued conversations for sure. But the reason for my vote today is because it's equally our responsibility to answer the cry of people on both sides of the concern. And yeah, it is about money right now. If we are to provide this and we don't receive that money from the state to provide it, then it's our responsibility to provide it, am I correct? Okay. And that's the statement that I want to make and I'm still happy to have continued conversations as needed.
All right.
Motion by Supervisor Gogan, second by Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Brown, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Superintendent Frazier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 4.8, adopt a resolution which confirms the continuance of a local emergency in the County of Trinity due to the River Complex Fire.
I have no additional comments.
Does anyone have any questions of Liz before we open to public comment? All right. With that, we will open item 4.8 to public comment.
I am not seeing any movement from the room. I have no raised hands and no new chats.
That will bring it back to the board.
Chairman, adopt 4.8 is presented.
I'll second.
Seeing no further discussion. Motion by Supervisor Groves, second by Chairman Brown, or Frazier. I'll get it. Chairman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves? Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 4.9, adopt a resolution which confirms the continuance of a local emergency in the County of Trinity due to 2020 wildfires. Any questions of Liz? Seeing none, I'll open item 4.9 to public comment.
Seeing no movement from the room. I have no raised hands and no new chats. Turn it back to you.
Anyone care to make a motion?
I'm going to adopt 4.9 as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Seeing none. Motion by Supervisor Groves, second by Supervisor Cox. Supervisor Cox, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves? Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Frazier?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Item 4.10, adopt a resolution which confirms the continuance of a local emergency in the County of Trinity due to 2021 wildfires. Any technical questions of Liz? Item 4.10. Seeing none, we'll open this item to public comment.
Seeing no movement in the room. I have no raised hands and no new chats.
With that, anyone care to make a motion?
I'm going to accept 4.10 as adopted as presented.
I'll second.
Seeing no further discussion. Motion by Supervisor Groves, second by Supervisor Gogan. Supervisor Gogan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox? Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Frazier?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item 4.11, adopt a resolution which confirms the continuance of a local health emergency in the county of Trinity due to debris and air quality concerns created by the 2020 wildfires. Any questions, Liz, before I open the public comment? Seeing none, is there any public comment on item 4.11?
Seeing none in the room. I have no raised hands and no new chats.
Would anyone care to make a motion on item 4.11?
So?
I'll second. Any further discussion?
Seeing none. Motion by Supervisor Brown, second by Supervisor Gogan. Supervisor Gogan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Chairman Frazier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 4.12, adopt a resolution which confirms the continuance of a local health emergency in the county of Trinity due to hazardous materials concerns resulting from the 2021 fires. Any technical questions? All right, we will open this item to public comment.
I'll be quick. Mr. Forsland made a comment about the mandates would be enforced by the state, or even if we...
Well, this is item 4.12, which is hazardous materials.
Oh, I thought you were on COVID again.
No, that'll be the next one. Or on hazardous materials. So...
No other comments from the room, and I have no raised hands and no new chats.
All right, we'll bring item 4.12 back. So, anyone care to make a motion?
No, no.
All right, second. Any further comment? Seeing none.
Motion by Supervisor Brown, second by Supervisor Gogan. Supervisor Gogan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Chairman Frazier?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, item 4.13, adopt a resolution which confirms the continuance of a local health emergency in the county of Trinity due to the novel coronavirus known as COVID-19. Any technical questions before we open public comment?
This one's different than 4.7?
Yes, this is the local health emergency. It's the local emergency, which apparently they're attached together, but we have to vote. So, public comment on item 4.13.
Thank you, Jack Morland. Mr. Forsland mentioned that the mandate would be a state mandate if we didn't have the mandate. That is true, but wouldn't it be nice if our deputies didn't have to enforce the mandates? If county personnel didn't have to enforce mandates, take a lot of pressure off them, take a lot of pressure off the people that live here, enforce the state to enforce their mandates. And then I've said before, and I think everybody agrees, that state law, our legislative law, the statutes prohibit experimental vaccines unless there is consent, and it has to be knowledgeable consent. California is the only state in the country that's adopted the Nuremberg Code. It's in the safety and health code. If you want to keep an emergency, a way to solve the problem would be to adopt the Nuremberg Code provisions as a county ordinance. So if the governor, who is ignoring, who says there's no provision, at his latest stage tried to amend the Nuremberg Code out of California statutes, you have it in your statutes. Why can't the county pass an ordinance saying that medical mandates will not be permitted unless they are underpinned by evidence? For example, on lock dams. This was the first lock dam done this way in the history of the world. Look at the damage it's done to public health, thank you very much. The masks, there's no, there's no medical evidence that cloth masks does anything to prevent COVID. So I'm putting that little ordinance on the books without directly offending the state and who gives you all the funding, I guess. I'm trying to help you so that the people in this county are concerned, even with the thoughtful resolution passed, that children are going to have to be taking vaccinations. Do something, not just nice words, do something real to protect the people that you represent. People are very anxious and concerned. We're in unusual times. And I know there's some risk of standing up and doing the right thing, but why don't we do it and protect our people from this government overreach? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further public comment? I thought I seen a hand raised on Zoom.
Yes. They have actually lowered their hand.
Okay.
So I have no hands raised and no new chats.
All right. With that, we'll bring it back to the board.
So I have a question for council.
Yes, sir.
If the county passed a no mandates rule, that would have what effect on the school system?
None. We cannot, the county trumped state law, just like the state can't trump federal law. So we couldn't pass anything inconsistent with state law.
And we have no authority over the schools or the Office of Education?
Correct. The state controls it, is the overseer of the Office of Education at a local level and then off to the state level, so it would be up that chain of command. It doesn't come through the county.
Thank you.
So Mr. Forsland's comment during a moment ago, when he said if you want to fight that battle, you need to go to the state, that would be accurate?
That is very accurate, yes.
But a school board could choose to take that challenge on...
So I don't represent the school board, I can advise them. On a local level, they would not have the ability to trump state law. However, if they as a group would like to join the lobbying that is currently going on at the state government, that would be a lot more effective than the county is, because again, it's not within our jurisdiction.
Would anyone care to make a motion?
Oh, I have one more comment. I have one more question, Margaret. So Margaret, there's literally no way that this board can offer any kind of protection for the people of Trinity County for anything that's handed down from the state. Is that true? That is pretty generalized. That any big was a really big word with regard to this.
So just globally, I'll give you the background on state law. So state law oversees what happens in the county. Now, as the county, you can pass regulations and laws that are not inconsistent with the state, meaning if the state doesn't cover it, that's within your jurisdiction, you can handle it. If the state makes a law on this, as it has, or a mandate on this, as it has related to COVID, you can't as a county trump that. You can't pass something, an ordinance, a law, a resolution, anything to vacate or override what the state has done. The mechanism, if you have a problem with it, is as many states have done, or many counties or local jurisdictions, and actually right now mostly school boards are doing this, is you can sue them. But unfortunately, the law is really well established that what the state is doing right now is within their jurisdiction and likely would not be a successful lawsuit. But that would be your mechanism, would be to sue.
Thank you.
You have five minutes. If I actually...
Sorry, you, you, you stepped to your time. So we, public comment is closed, or this is just for the board at this time?
Jack, if you had other information or things that we could move forward to, just email it to me, please. Because I think you're in my district now, but I'm not sure.
Well...
Is he still in the...
And you can email it to me too also, but at this point, I don't want to reopen the public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So anyway, we're still looking for a motion.
I'll move through that, present.
Second. Do we have a motion? Second, any further discussion or motions? Seeing none.
Motion by Supervisor Brown, second by Supervisor Gogan. Supervisor Gogan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox? Chairman Frazier?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Item 4.14, ratify the deputy director of emergency services declaration and confirm the existence of a local emergency in Trinity County due to the December 2021 winter storm event. Okay. Any questions about this one? All right, any public comment on item 4.14?
I'm seeing none from the room. I have no raised hands and no new chats.
I would move to adopt that.
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, motion by Supervisor Cox, second by Supervisor Gogan. Supervisor Gogan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Frazier?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
With that, does anyone need to take another break before we move on to 4.15, or are we good to go? You want five minutes? All right, well, we will do that. We'll make it, we'll make it about eight minutes, we'll return in. Liz, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Five. We will call the meeting back into order. Planning and zoning, item 4.15, receive an update on the commercial cannabis program. No fiscal impact.
So hello, everyone. Chairman Frasier and Board members. Lisa Lozier, interim director of building and planning. And I just wanted to share a couple of words, kind of an explanation. Ultimately, this, this item is probably going to be agendized on a regular basis for reports. It is listed under the planning department. And so my name is also on that agenda item. So I just wanted to explain that I'm not necessarily going to be giving you all of the cannabis, the commercial cannabis program update. But I would like to kind of explain what my role has been, just, just so it's clear. That, you know, as, as the interim director, I have been concentrating on making sure that the staff that supports the cannabis division have all of the items that they need, that they have a good place to work, they have the tools that they need and to support them with information that I feel would be helpful. And many times that is bridging the gap between planning and cannabis because they are pretty much different types of, of projects. I have a lot of information to impart regarding planning types of projects, not so much on cannabis. But I can help bridge the gap where we're looking at if you have conditional use permits, what that process is, how that would fit with the licenses. And to a certain regard, we're all learning that together. And I think as our staff, both planning and cannabis, understand where they fit in that program, that they're going to be substantially better and more efficient at providing information to the public and working through the licenses, working through what is appropriate, how to communicate in, in a better way to provide status updates and to be more timely with getting back to the cannabis folks that are trying to get their licenses done and trying to stay in business. So part of, of what is going on, of course, is David Kolbeck was very kind to step up and start helping the cannabis division with working and with the two consultants that we have hired, Laco and Helix. And he has taken on the bigger part of working with those consultants and organizing how work is distributed and how staff responds to that and what we can do as a department to make that process better. In a lot of ways, I'm trying to help facilitate that by providing access to our SmartGov program for our consultants so they have read-only access. We're not transferring so many files back and forth and it is quicker. So we're working on things of that nature. I really do appreciate David, his expertise as he has been involved in this program from the beginning and he has a substantially better understanding of the cannabis program than I do. So I, I really appreciate his efforts. And also want to point out that his, his interest in helping us is going to be a short-term interest. And that is why the division director position was created. That position was officially flown on December 29th, is open till filled. And hopefully we can get that position filled and get somebody up to speed so we have a permanent presence within the cannabis division, which I think will be helpful for everyone. So that concludes what I have to say. If you have any questions for me, I would be glad to answer them. Otherwise, I'll turn the floor over to David.
Do you have any questions for Lisa?
Yeah, Lisa, I appreciate your, your work in taking the department over. But in the cannabis, we had CUPs that have been lost forever in the process. And I know you were going to, at least my understanding was you were going to try to get those together and get them off to, and a consultant someplace so we can get that going. What do we got going there?
So what we have is, I went back through with Skyler Fisher, who is actually within the planning department. And we have a very organized list of all of those applications listed by license and how many of them have a conditional use permit, a zone amendment, director's use permit, whether that be for variances or just for an RV that they need for a residence. All of those are categorized in a group. So we've gone back through those and determined that, you know, there's some that were with SHN that are on the verge of being completed, those stayed with SHN. Some of them need a little bit more work, potentially, you know, if we can get through them quickly, may stay with SHN, but otherwise will be shipped off to Laco. And what we're doing in preparation for Laco to take over those projects is we're doing the initial outreach for agencies. And we're also doing the initial outreach for AB52, which is the consultation with the tribal entities or agencies that are in the area. And that's one of the things that we've been a little bit slow on. It's, we started requesting information from the Native American Heritage Commission the first week in November. And because of delays, we only got the list that we needed two days ago on Monday. So we're hoping to kind of hurry up that process a bit and maybe work with Laco that they can take over some of those projects while we're working, doing our outreach to the tribal agencies. So that's kind of what we have on the table for now. But we are also in, while we're having, working with Laco for those types of projects, we are also trying to organize, in particular, any of the licenses that have director's use permits associated with them, that would be for variances, that we keep those kind of to the top of the list. And as we move through the appendix C documents and people are getting to the point that they're ready to have their licenses issued, if that director's use permit has to be to planning commission for a decision, then we get that done in a timely manner. If it is only needed to be approved by the director and we can verify that those things are as they were originally approved by the planning commission, that we're ready to move forward on those types of items. So we're not having the holdups because there's no coordination between all of those different types of projects. So that's basically where we're at.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Lisa?
All right. Thank you.
Others?
So once again, David Kolbeck, now as temporary cannabis manager. Lisa, thank you very much for that introduction. She has been doing a fantastic job in everything she just mentioned, particularly the coordination between planning and cannabis and getting all the right actors together and getting the space together in the, in the new building. So it is much, much appreciated. And the component of the CUPs that she just spoke to, of course, is a critical, critical function that is, has been great for us to be able to divide up some of our efforts in terms of planning efforts versus, say, cannabis and environmental review efforts specifically. So I was going to speak a moment to the idea of the posting for the division director position, but that has already been covered several times here today. Very excited for that. I was initially appointed, I believe, for around 60 days, which is coming up soon. So I anticipate that I will still be involved to a degree with the program as a, back to an advisor position to help make that transition as seamless as possible. I will point out that much of what we're doing now in the division is trying to set up that, that new director for success, doing anything that we can with that forward-looking perspective of that person being able to have all the tools that they need in order to move forward as quickly as possible. So that is something, at least a mantra in my mind of being able to, to anticipate and look forward to that, that transition and positive, positive growth. I guess I'll jump around a little bit in what I have written to you now and just to back up to the, as I believe Deputy Lozier had mentioned, that originally this, this type of discussion was set up for the first board meeting of every month. That's how Director, former Director Hunter and I had arranged that, going back through pretty much the bulk of this last year. Some, some of those presentations are, you know, more intensive in terms of PowerPoints, others are really just discussion points. And this needs to continue, I feel, with the new division director as a point of access, both for all the supervisors as well as for public comment to, to air out some, some concerns and to, to provide some explanations as, as both the public requires and as you require. And I say that specifically beyond AdHoc, who of course is very engaged, but this is another point of contact for the rest of the, rest of the board to, to engage this particular issue. One thing, one thing to note, the local jurisdiction grant, we have been awarded that grant. We just heard not that long ago, so over the holiday break, may have, and Dr. Coons can correct me if I'm wrong, may have been Christmas Eve even. I think that that email was originally sent out saying that they are going to move forward with the three point, almost $3.3 million. That contract is being prepared now and we will discuss how that moves forward in terms of if that's a board action or not. But that, that is some very good news for, for the program itself. I will also speak, you know, just briefly to the equity program. We have had initial meetings with that to, to kick off with our consultants, the process for developing that equity program, which if I recall correctly is basically a two-phase process at this point. One is to conduct the interviews to understand essentially what our landscape is in Trinity County for those impacted with the, by the equity issue. And then to also develop the program itself. So I'm happy to say that we'll, we should have some more updates for, for the board as that, as that moves forward. Was happy to hear from Mr. Keys in public comment earlier in terms of the qualified cultivator grants through DCC. I need to look into that and so hope, hope I can have some updates for you as, as we learn more and how we can access that opportunity. Earlier, you know, there was a discussion, I believe, in public comments regarding the number of appendixes that, and AdHoc, I believe, was feeling that question just earlier in the board meeting today. So it's, it's one point here is, is a question on the board to, to receive in some direction. Is, is it preferred by the board that I would, or someone in my position would stand here and provide you with appendix C updates, numbers, where we are in process? Or is it one that you prefer that AdHoc would report out to you? That's another option. Or is it one that you're interested in? So perhaps at the end of this, if you think about that, of what exactly you would like to get out of these types of agendized items, that would be, that would be good to know. Again, these presentations have, to some degree, have been across the board in terms of depth or, or breadth or generalities. In any case, that would be good to hear from you perhaps in a moment. Currently, we are continuing with our, well, I'll jump to AdHoc too, is, is that I participated as a standing member in AdHoc and given frequent updates of what staff is doing, what our consultants are doing, what council is doing, what our structure is as we move forward. So that has been a useful function, I feel, for, for the department to, to discuss staff concerns perhaps, or also hear concerns that the AdHoc is receiving from, from interested parties, cultivators or others. So that has been beneficial to date. We, to that end, I'll just state that, you know, staff is going through a review process now, all the files of all the process and everything, as well as receiving and processing of appendixes. We have standing meetings with staff. We have standing meetings with our two consultants, Laco and Helix, as Director Lozier had mentioned, both individually and all as a group. And county council, Sean Cameron, Supervisor Cox, you had a question earlier, Sean Cameron has been involved with all of those discussions and integral parts of how we're, we're looking to move forward with, with our process. I will say that we did hold a public meeting on December 20th. That was in these, these chambers here. One where we were looking to really make ourselves available to discuss appendixes, the checklist, environmental checklist that everybody is submitting to us to discuss issues in terms of what we're seeing and what we would like to see and having that dialogue with the interested community. I felt that was a very useful meeting and it was something that I very much wish to continue at that meeting on the 20th. I believe we had stated that we would look to hold another one in the middle of January. That date I'm looking to set hopefully tomorrow when we have the group meetings with our consultants to see, to check on their availability. But I'm hoping to do something very similar to, to what was conducted before, but to answer more specific questions that is, that were raised by people that commented. There are, of course, some, some community members here now and hopefully on Zoom that during the public comment period here for this agenda item, that they can ask more questions and provide more direction to me specifically about what they would like to hear and how those meetings could be more useful and beneficial to, to, in a general sense, not for individual problems, I would say, but in general sense for, to, to move forward. As Director Lozier also had mentioned, we are working with local tribes, the Norrellmuk tribe specifically, in terms of satisfying AB52 requirements related to CQ review. That meeting, those meetings aren't exactly set, but they are scheduled to be held within a week or two. Similarly, with DCC, coordinating with them, CDFW, Waterboard, all of those agencies that impact our licensability, that coordination is continuing. So to that, to that end, this, you know, very general run-through of different topics, some explanation, but I'm happy to hear, receive any direction from the board about what you'd like to hear at this point and if there's any other specific questions that I can answer. I'm happy to do that.
Do you want to have any questions for?
I have a couple of questions for David. I personally would like to see the appendixes brought forward by yourself for the next director. Because I think I have a better idea of how many to submit it over the AdHoc. So I would be open for that and I'd be open to continue the meetings that you, you just had with the consulting firms and the public. If you felt those are fruitful, I think you did, I think it'd be a great way to, to keep this moving forward. And I think Lisa said that we opened up the division director job on the 29th, just a week or so ago now. And it would be open until full or hired. When does that rubber meet the road with hired? Do we have many applicants, do you know?
I can move this question to Dr. Coons if you wish, but no, my understanding is that we very intentionally and I think correctly flew it as open until filled to allow us some more flexibility. Say, for example, a typical way to fly a position is only for two weeks. Well, if you don't receive enough applications or qualified applicants by those two weeks, then you have to turn around and fly it again. You have to wait until those two weeks are over before you actually begin moving on any individual application. This structure here provides, the open until filled structure provides us the chance to decide to interview people as soon as possible. However, that, that decision in terms of the rubber meeting the road, I don't believe has been made specifically yet. I am aware of only one application that has been received so far. So it will be an internal discussion with the hiring panel about whether to interview that single applicant now or wait for a second application or how to exactly proceed with that. So rubber hits the road is, is when, when we make that decision, I think, and hold that initial interview and have determined what that structure will look like, that interview structure and hiring process will look like. I hope that's enough of an answer and if Dr. Coons can add to it.
No, thank you very much. So how long do we wait? We have one application?
As far as I know.
How long do we wait till we get the second one possibly?
Well, they'll come in as submitted, so we don't have a timeframe on, on the second one, but we'll review this week the first applicant and if they're qualified, we'll interview them. So as they come in, as, as they meet the minimum qualifications, then we'll interview them. If they're not, then we can't. But I said, just reiterating what David said, we'll interview if they're qualified as they come in.
And to your point earlier, if I could, you had mentioned wanting some appendix C information. Sure. So just very briefly, I can add some, some detail to that, although not extensive detail. Our staff meeting after this holiday break is scheduled for tomorrow, first thing tomorrow morning. So I will have more of an updates regarding the checklist, the appendixes tomorrow. My understanding as of our last meeting is that we're roughly around eighty or so that have been received and that they are in stages of review by our, by our consultants. If you'll recall back to the transition plan that was presented to the board, those come in a number of different phases, phases one through four, in terms of the type of application that we're looking at. We're looking to prioritize phase one, which are those cultivation licenses, or I should just say cannabis licenses, that had received an extension letter during this last season after the December urgency ordinance, so about a year ago. So those are our first priorities, but we will continue to be working through whatever we receive in terms of the checklist themselves. And then to reiterate, part of the public meeting, as, as you had mentioned a moment ago, that was specifically to speak to, I don't like using this term, but perhaps it's appropriate deficiencies in the checklist that we have deficiencies in the checklist that we have seen. And by that, I mean common deficiencies, issues such as we would like generally as a county, we would like to see more project description. We would like to be, see more specific analysis that are, that is location specific, that we would like to see that documentation included in the checklist so that we, we know what story is being told to us. It was a discussion on the December 20 meeting of just, hey, this is what we would like to see from, from everybody here and here's your chance to, you know, revisit your checklist and be submitted to us to, to correct any information that you may have initially submitted. So that's a bit vague, but I'm, I can speak to more process if you wish, but I believe I addressed your three questions there.
Yep. That was going to be my next question, the most common deficiency that you're seeing in appendix C, so I think I answered that.
And that's fair. I could summarize that even just very briefly and hopefully accurately is one of attaching the right material. So attaching any studies or surveys, documentation, even if it's been supplied to another state agency such as the Water Board for Site Management Plan is to provide that to us as well, so that we know we're looking at the full story, the full package. Just submit, submit everything that needs to be talked to, to, to touch on. Another consideration would be the project description to make sure that you're really describing to us the full picture of, of what your operation looks like now. We even discuss what it looks like in the past, what it looks like now and what it looks like in the future. That, that is something that oftentimes what we have reviewed so far was a little bit light on, I think is fair to say. Another consideration is one where it's really to make that appendix C or that checklist specific to your site, to your property, to your project. And to analyze and really think through all the components of that checklist in a way that are, not the entire EIR, not the entire cannabis program, but just your site. That's what we really want to know. And I have said it many times, I don't know if it's the right language to stick on, but it's that, you know, make an argument, tell us the story and we'll review the story, the narrative that you're telling us and see, see what we think about it. But you need to make that, tell us that story and that's a component of the project description and the site analysis.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Well, I have a statement, I think. David, I think that if you could time those, those public meetings to like our ad hoc public meeting, because hearing from the consultant's view is obviously better for the group than hearing from me and Dan who are relaying back and forth. So I think there's already that Thursday that's kind of been picked out and I think people have got that on their schedule. So if you try to time it to meet those, I think those who qualify as ad hoc public meetings.
Good, thank you for that comment. Yeah, I will definitely consider that. So it's appropriate that people are traveling, that they only have to travel once a week. I think that's a component of what you're suggesting. Yes, that makes, that makes quite a bit of sense. I will consider that and bring that to our consultants, whether the 13th next week is too soon for us or if that's manageable, or we'd be looking more at the 20th of January to dovetail, as you suggested. I do want to maybe perhaps coordinate with ad hoc or receive more direction from the board as a whole, whether that takes the place of the ad hoc standing meeting or whether it's, you know, before or after it, how, how you see that as an ad hoc committee interfacing with this, with this public, public meeting.
With me personally, Dan can certainly in, is that we would have our standing ad hoc morning meeting and I mean, we can move it earlier or whatever to, to facilitate. Then the ad hoc public meeting would be whenever you guys, you know, feel that you need a meeting, then that would take the place of our, me and Dan's public meeting.
Understood. And so, you know, that's a suggestion now and my, my request is that the rest of the board chime in with that idea, if you're okay with that. Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of that. That makes sense again for the idea of people, you know, traveling as much, appreciated. I believe you, Supervisor, Chairman Fraser, I believe you were at the last meeting by Zooms.
I was because I couldn't make the trip over. I had other things to do.
There you go. So that makes sense then for both of you regardless, I appreciated your, your participation there at that first kickoff meeting. So yes, I'm, I'm happy to receive any other corroboration from other supervisors.
Sounds good, do you mean?
Yep. Okay, thank you, ad hoc, then, then we can coordinate to make that, to make that work.
And we can do that at the ad hoc. So does anybody, do you have any further questions? All right.
And I would add to Liam. So Liam, some days the ad hoc, so for example, if we met on Thursday and our board meeting was on Tuesday, we would have the information, but then there's others out of the cycle that when, when he would be David or whoever is presenting, then he would have the information for. So I think a combination of three of those reports.
Other appendixes?
The appendixes or whatever numbers, you know, just whoever has the information first.
We will make a standard, no, I think that coordination we committed to yet.
What I'm hearing, if I could jump in, is that it is of interest to you to receive that kind of information. So to find the most efficient way that there isn't, say, plain telephone, the idea of losing any details in there in translation, but that you're interested.
I shouldn't find the most efficient way.
Yeah. If David's only going to be doing this, the first meeting of the month, we're meeting as an ad hoc every Thursday. So the second meeting of the month, Keith and I will have that information. So we can also report it out. So I think what Keith was saying is it'll be kind of a group effort here. Yeah, David, and we'll report out when I think that's his monthly. But then if you want to know, just ask Keith or I will wait and report out. We're talking, hopefully it will happen.
Excellent. So at, at the risk of, of talking about this too much now, I think that's probably a better thing than not talking about it enough. So however, many type of times, even in one meeting today, that this is, these issues are discussed, I'm in favor of that if for no other reason than the public having multiple chances to comment and chime in.
Tough question. Do you know, are there any CPs that are waiting on the planning commission to review them or is everything held up with consultants?
So I, I can't speak to that in too much depth. Director Lozier had just mentioned that in terms of the broad attempt to clean up and to re-care, how I have the best phrases.
Let me start the program.
Okay, let's start this. Let me, let me, and I don't want to belabor this, but let me just break this down now. So between our two consultants, we have Helix and we have Laco, we're looking for those two consultants to specialize. And Laco can specialize in processing a lot of material in terms of checklist that we need reviewed, but also process CUPs. That's really what we're leaning on them to do. We're leaning on Helix to be something more, to process checklist, yes, and provide a lot of bulk, but also to help us with, as more of a public facing sort of component to improve our materials, templates, forms and our general outreach. So that being said, that what Director Lozier has been doing with her staff is to really bring together all the CUPs that are outstanding, pull them away from SHN that are related to cannabis specifically, pull them away from SHN who has been working on those in the past and provide those to Laco. But she needs to do that and her staff needs to do that in a way that she's providing all the documentation that's necessary and not leaving something out. So her review is critical. Her staff's review is very important for Laco to begin to move forward with those. But that, that is the process that we're setting up. And the twofold benefit of that is one that Laco has a specialty in cannabis and that is what we have hired them to do and that is what we now have these, this grant money to help fund. But also the SHN specialty is one in more planning and so they can then be released to be focusing on all the other planning efforts, CUPs or otherwise, that are related to, to the rest of that department. So that's how we're approaching this or attacking the problem is one of making sure we're giving people the right information, but dividing up and getting the best specialists that we can on specific problems.
Thank you.
One quick question, if I could just have it, maybe you've already said this and I apologize, but I get a lot of questions on this, so I just want it really clearly defined. So Lisa's involvement, getting things set up and organized and office space, you know, supportive environment and people working well. And then Mr. Cameron is working as the connection, if you will, between our applicants and Laco and Helix and, correct? I'm good so far?
Yes, that, that's a fair statement, yes.
Okay. And, and I think really what's being looked for is coming to that point in this journey where Lisa's time is focused on planning, non-cannabis planning things, is, is that a fair statement?
That is also correct, yes. Both for the running of an entire department, that is one pitfall, I could say, of the past that we're very much trying to address and to avoid moving forward. And so with Director Lozier's specialties situated in the planning department to manage everything there, that's quite enough. That also is the logic behind the idea of the cannabis division director position that Dr. Coons had created, that really allows that person to focus on, on the cannabis side of the equation.
And when that person is at last hired, does that remove our need for Mr. Cameron's services or are those going to remain?
So I'll answer that by a statement I made earlier of trying to set up the new cannabis director for success is one where this process is not immaterial. We can change it as we move forward, but that right now is a working process and so that, that director can step in to something that's functioning, be caught up to speed as quickly as possible. So to answer your question directly, no, I anticipate that Sean Cameron's and council services are a component of what we're trying to do here, that they are, and this is very intentional in what we've done in discussions with our consultants, he is taking on a role that's needed to increase the efficiency of our consultants' efforts. So he, he will continue to be a part of what we're doing in the structure, the framework we have moving forward. That may change as, as this landscape changes, but that's, that's what I see as the best way to advance this.
So we don't picture him at this point trying to work his way out of the job. We picture that he's going to need to be in the foreseeable future, an ongoing component.
I, I say for the foreseeable future, as, as brief as that often is with cannabis and cannabis regulations, but yes, for the foreseeable future, he will be part of that. We have budgeted or allocated for that component. It is even a component of our, or the grant that we just are looking to receive. He is a component of that. So as any budget and then the board, of course, would be concerned about budgets in any particular department as that moves forward, we, that can be reassessed and you will have another opportunity to chime in when those budget considerations are in front of you.
I'm just going to answer a little bit, that as long as we're doing the CEQA work and we have 500 licenses to go through the CEQA process, I believe he's going to be involved.
Yeah, I think the vision is why we have the two consultants on board and we're restructuring and rebooting the program, he will be absolutely involved. But as we get through the CEQA and we skip back to whatever the new normal is going to be, then yeah, we'll begin to face him out. But, but with the consultants and, and the process we have right now, it is, he's an intricate part of that process.
And then I have one more question and it may or may not be the appropriate moment to ask it. But in this discussion that you've had about starting to rework some ordinances and with the fees being set in ordinance, is there a fee study that's going on that then will be a part of the ordinance adjustment?
Yeah, yeah, it's included in the, in the county fee study. And then it would be, again, maybe overstepping my brand announce, but it would be my recommendation that we take the, the fee out of the ordinance and make it more administrative where we bring it to the board with, update the fee study every, every 12 to 18 months and we know where we are.
Yes, thank you.
For my part, I'm, I'm looking forward to the services of that consultant to help with the ordinance drafting. And again, a point of contact then would be through the ad hoc committee's efforts to, to help steer and orient that.
David, we talked about this in ad hoc, but one of the big frustrations for the consultants and others is the point of contact person on non-appending C items. And could you address that a little bit?
Yes, unfortunately I don't have a satisfactory answer. I sympathize with that, but just to vocalize a, a constraint to our bottleneck is that I am functionally, should I just go or do you want to?
Go ahead.
That I am functionally the point of contact for, for cannabis issues, although I'm working in coordination with Director Lozier, of course, because she is the, the department head. So there's some interplay there between she and I, but that if there's, you know, general issues, then yeah, we're working that out in terms of our limited current capacity, which I know you've heard that for years. I'm not happy to have to reiterate the staffing term, but I, I'm addressing what I'm able to get to. Our staff is addressing what they're able to get to. And that again is the need and my thankfulness for this board passing the director position last, last board meeting is because that person will be the point of contact for all cannabis related considerations. And that person will of course coordinate with Director Lozier.
So if I may, Supervisor Gross, part of our process is in training, you know, because in, in my opinion, it doesn't seem to be that there was any specific communication to staff as to what their role actually was in moving these projects forward and, and reviewing them. After you review them, what happens next? And one of the most important things is having a specific point of contact. And that is something that we are developing, that we will have a specific staff member, one of the more senior experienced staff members that will be able to address status of projects specifically. We're talking about how the best way to update that information, whether we're going to use the SmartGOTH program and put all of our stuff in there, whether we are going to have a specific spreadsheet that is going to have all of the license numbers, one for CUPs, you know, so they're not huge spreadsheets. But part of that is going to include, does it go to the planning commission? When is that scheduled? Does it need to go to the board? When is that scheduled? When is the last time that we received communication from our consultants? When is the last time that we received any kind of information from agencies that we sent out referrals to? And then finally, what is the status today? You know, what is the status of, of that? Do we need to contact the applicant or the license holder and ask them for additional information? Do we have everything we need? Do we need to schedule it for a planning commission and, and get that process started? So all of those things were in a typical planning agency, that would be something that happens regularly. And for planners, typically they all have their own way of keeping that type of information. What we want to do is we want to standardize it. So we have it in one location. If that person that is, is qualified to do the status updates is sick or out on vacation, somebody else can look at that information and give a status update and maybe take some questions to ask that person when they're back in the office. Because the communication is really valuable and what all of that does is it trains our staff to be cognizant of where they are at in the process for all of these things. And my personal opinion, that's been missing. So that, that is something that I'm very interested in training for, so they have a better awareness of what happens. You know, we don't just take the paper over the counter and put it in a file and then nothing happens, you know? So, so that's really important for me to have staff understand what that process looks like and what their role is in the process and who specifically gives the information or is responsible for the information. That's really important. And I would also like to speak to Sean Cameron. One of the things that he's doing that is very valuable in the training process is he's writing those incomplete letters to the license holders in regard to their appendix C. So staff will be able to take a look at the results of those letters and understand what's appropriate to include in an incomplete letter, what they want to communicate, the best way to communicate so it is understandable information, so they can get something back that's valuable. You know, we're not wasting a lot of time of back and forth. You're not asking for one thing and then you get that and then you ask for another thing. You know, that's, that's really frustrating for everybody and it wastes a lot of time. So those are all pieces of that puzzle that we need to bring together for the program to work and, and that's what we're looking for there. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. We will open item 4.15 to public comment.
This is a presentation, are we?
Are we, do we open the, yeah. Yeah.
You are, okay.
So do we have any public comment?
On this item?
Yes, on 4.15.
In three minutes.
I have one on Zoom with you.
Yeah, that's fine. Veronica Kelly Alves.
Good afternoon, Veronica Kelly Alves, De La City. I want to take a moment and say thank you to David. I always enjoy listening to his presentations. They're very concise, informative, and they really kind of break it down in a way that makes it understandable what's going on. And in saying that, it's something you guys mentioned with the ad hoc and bringing in what he's been doing with the consultants and making it the public meeting. You know, I was fortunate enough to be able to participate in one of the ad hocs regarding the opt-outs so I could kind of see what's happening behind the curtain, as they would say. And I'm a little confused as to what, who's allowed to come to the ad hoc meetings and now you're going to move that over to there. If there could be a little more explanation of who's allowed to come to the ad hoc meetings, I know they're happening on Thursdays, but I also just wanted to say, great job to Lisa and the whole department and everybody that's been working so hard on this. It sounds like a lot of, a lot of work has gone into getting this program uprided and they're really taking a look at things. And again, just a lot of kudos because great information today. I think one of the best reports we've had in a while and just wanted to say thank you for that. And just a little more information on how to, how people that are not involved in the community can also have a voice in what, how this is all moving forward, not things that are getting uprided and trying to stop anything, but as we move forward as a community, how this can all work together. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Girls, you want to answer that?
Yeah. So the ad hocs, basically the ad hoc as a whole meets in the morning on the Thursday and then it's designed for an open public meeting at one and then we have cannabis growers, I guess is the better term, mainly consultants at 2:30 or 3:00, depending on the time. We will be meeting this Thursday for those that are listening to that schedule. So the one o'clock one is really designed to just anybody can come in and we just give you an update on what's happening. The initial thought was we were going to have more of an open process, but the cannabis growers were uncomfortable with having people they felt that were trying to sabotage the process there. So we basically broken this down into two separate things. And then once a month of that, there's a group of, we have the ad hoc, or not the ad hoc, excuse me, the opt-out group comes in and we explain to them what's happening with the opt-outs. So that, I forget what, is that the third week?
At the time of work of my colleagues.
Yes. So if you were interested in that, then give me a ring. So that's the basic layout of it. If the chair will allow it, just one moment.
Thank you. I just wanted to make one comment that I neglected to point out earlier is that the public meeting related to appendix C that was held on December 20th, there is a link available on the cannabis website, the Zoom link, I believe, and it was also posted on the cannabis division social media outlets, Facebook, I believe. So that those are meant to be public facing. Anyone is welcome to participate. They're not geared specifically to any individual group, although of course there's interested parties, those who are submitting appendix C checklists. But that's another source of information if you want it to be caught up to date in terms of how this is proceeding. So yes, please check those out.
Do we have any other public comment on Zoom?
I have no raised hands and no new chats.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Deidre Brower. I do want to say that meeting on December 20th, consultants was really helpful. I felt I got a lot of good information. One question I have about that is the woman from Helix, I believe, Leslie, that was speaking said she was going to have some additional information that was going to be going up on the cannabis website and she did put one item up there, but I was wondering if there's a timeline for some other documents. I also want to stress the importance of regular updates to individuals. I know that those meetings are for broad questions and things like that, but as Lisa described, there doesn't seem to be a good system for keeping track of projects and where they're at. And so because we're in January now and this is a lot of work on applicant's part and on consultant's part to get through this review and have everybody be where they need to be, we can't think our project's being moved forward when really it's just sitting somewhere. I think that happens a lot. So I would urge you to please have a system in place. When that appendix C is forwarded to the consultants, let the applicant know that. Otherwise, we're going to call you 100 times, we're going to waste all of your time and it goes up the chain, so we're going to waste three people's time for every one question that we have on that. So if there could be a better system so we know when it's moving along and we don't have to wonder or think it's okay and then June comes around and, oh gosh, you know what? It's sitting somewhere, not in a file or in a file, I don't know. But that notice that things are moving and where they're at because they just, they just sit historically frankly and that process needs to change. So I would ask that you stress that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
I have no raised hands and no new chats.
I don't believe we need to take any action on this item, do we? That was just an update. So with that, we will move to closed session. Oh yeah, we have to have public comment on the closed session.
Go ahead and read it.
Government, item 5.1, Government Code Section 54954.5C, Conference of Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation, Number of Cases, One, Trinity County versus Kirk Seelander, Teresa Seelander, Endos, One to Five, Trinity County Superior Court Case Number 21CB135. So any public comment on this item?
I have no raised hands and no new chat.
Okay.
Will you adjourn the meeting for me?
All right, I'll do. The adjournment came after the closed session on my agenda, but I will adjourn the meeting and we will move into closed session.
Thank you.
I told her to.